Good evening, everybody. It's 6:30 PM. If we could all call this meeting to order, if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Robin Carter, would you please leave us?
I will. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Russi.
Councilmember Lau.
Present.
Councilmember Crosby.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Present.
Mayor Hepburn.
Present.
We have, tonight, we have a presentation. Is that correct, Mr. Russi?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a request for a presentation by the county assessor. Jeff Prang will be giving us an overview of their operations and activities.
Thank you. Good evening. How are you?
Very well.
Welcome to Laverne.
Thank you very much. It's great to be here. Nice to see you, Mayor, Councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today to provide you some information about our office, as well as some market data about what's going on here in the city of Laverne. About...
Black of the house.
I like to say that.
We were just seeing, if you noticed.
I just assumed...
You know, we like to play tricks on Laverne.
I don't think it's off. It's missing.
I assume that you wanted me to just project. But...
Well, you know, now it's like, we were trying to get some help with our taxes, but now we can't because we kind of pulled a fastie on you, so sorry about that.
I gave you all the secrets before the microphone came up. So, but thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I know a lot of people don't understand the office of the assessor, and it's always... I'm grateful for the opportunity to come and speak and share a little bit about what we do and how we can serve our mutual constituents. For those who don't know me, I actually spent many years as a city council member myself. It was 18 years on the West Hollywood City Council, including several terms as mayor. I hope the information I give you tonight will be useful to both you, as well as your constituents. I always like to begin by telling folks when I speak in public to tell you not only what the assessor does, but as importantly, what we do not do. I do not collect taxes. There's another guy who collects taxes. He's got a very intuitive title. He's called "The Tax Collector." A lot of people call me "The Tax Assessor." There's no such thing as a tax assessor. It's assessor and tax collector. For those who aren't familiar with the office of the assessor, I am one of three countywide elected officials. Everybody knows the other two. They're famous, or maybe even infamous these days. That's the sheriff and the district attorney. I administer a department of about 1,300 employees. We run six different offices around the county. We're the largest local property assessment agency in the United States, and I'm responsible for locating and establishing the value of over 2.5 million taxable parcels annually. As assessor, I'm responsible for assessing not only real property, land and buildings, but also what's known as business personal property, which includes furniture, equipment, and machinery, although it also includes commercial and general aviation aircraft, mobile homes, boats, and, believe it or not, even resources. My primary job is the production of the annual assessment roll, which is essentially just the inventory of all taxable property in the county. And the assessment roll serves a couple of primary functions. The first one, obviously, is the basis for property taxes. But secondly, it also is an important planning document for local government that may use it in anticipation of preparing their budget, anticipation of property tax revenues, and it also serves as a bit of a barometer as to the health of the local real estate market. This year, the assessment roll represents the 11th consecutive year of countywide property value growth since the recession of 2008. The assessment roll grew at about $63 billion. That's a 3.7% increase over the previous year. It's a slightly lower increase than last year, which was just over 6%. The total assessed value of all property in the county this year is over $1.7 trillion, trillion with a T, and that will generate over $17 billion in property tax revenue, which is allocated to local government, cities, school districts, and it funds the public services that we all rely most upon, such as municipal services. To give you an idea of what's going on in the local market, I've included a table here which shows you the property value growth in Laverne and some of the surrounding cities. As you can see, Laverne grew at 5.9%, which is quite a bit stronger than the countywide average. The total assessed value of all property in the city of Laverne is $5.5 billion. That's the assessed value, so as you can imagine, that the market value is considerably higher. The residential real estate market, despite the impacts of COVID pandemic, actually fared reasonably well. Home prices rose countywide dramatically over the last year, primarily due to two major conditions. One was a lack of inventory. People were not selling, but also combined with historically low mortgage rates created a very competitive environment. Laverne has experienced the impact of this tight housing market. The price of a single-family home, not including condominiums, rose over 11% year-over-year for a median sales price of a single-family residence of $850,000 in October. We anticipate that this trend will continue as more buyers enter the market and look to attractive and well-managed cities like Laverne to call home. And I did put a chart here which shows you the median sales price of Laverne and some of the surrounding cities. The pandemic, though, also had an adverse impact on business operations, causing a lot of that taxable business property, such as furniture, equipment, and machinery, to go unused, and as a result, this property may have experienced a decline in value. And under Proposition 13, if property loses value, I am required to lower the assessment and provide property tax relief. So as a response, my office has proactively lowered the assessments for over 47,000 small businesses countywide to reflect the impacts of COVID. Our total assessed reductions are over $210 billion. Here in Laverne, we reduced the personal property assessments of about 174 businesses to date out of a total of 918 that pay business personal property taxes. This represents about 20% of all business property assessments in the county. It's over half a million dollars in assessed value reductions. I want to change topics for a moment to talk about another issue that's been on a lot of people's mind over the last year, and that is an amendment to Prop. 13 that was adopted last fall called Proposition 19 and its impacts on homeowners and seniors and property owners with children. Prop. 19 did two things primarily. The first thing it did is it allowed senior citizens over the age of 55, victims of natural disasters, and the severely disabled, to transfer their property tax base when they sell their home and buy a new one. So if you bought your home in 1990 and you want to buy a really expensive home, you can take that tax base with you. It allows you, it makes your tax base portable. You can transfer it up to three times. You can transfer it anywhere in the state into a home of any value. Those are great expansions over the previous law. The second component of Prop. 19 is a little bit more controversial and wasn't very well-known during the campaign, and this deals with the transfer of property between family members, specifically between parents and children, and grandparents and grandchildren. This component under Prop. 19 greatly reduces those inheritance benefits to families. So in order to qualify for the family inheritance benefit, you have to, a couple of things have to occur. One, the only property that qualifies for inheritance along with a tax base is your primary residence. Under the previous law, your kids could inherit your primary residence and up to $1 million in additional property without it being reassessed. Now, the only one that qualifies is the primary residence. Secondly, in order to qualify, that your child or grandchild must make that home their primary residence within one year and file for the homeowner's exemption. Prop. 19 also puts a cap on how much value that your children can inherit. And the rule of thumb is that if the property is worth less than $1 million, you can inherit that home, as well as the tax base, without reassessment. If it's over $1 million, there's going to be a tax increase. It'll be a blended rate between the inherited portion and a partial rate. I can tell you that that was a controversial piece, and there's actually a movement right now by the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association to qualify a ballot measure to try to restore those benefits. Lot of questions and concerns about Prop. 19. We actually created a special site on our webpage to help people answer questions. I encourage anybody who has questions about Prop. 19 to visit our site. The last thing I want to mention is, deals with tax savings programs. While I am not a revenue-er, I don't collect taxes. I do manage a number of programs to help folks save money on their property taxes. In fact, a lot of those programs help seniors, veterans, the disabled, victims of natural disaster, nonprofits. Last year, we saved taxpayers about $650 million in property taxes. The one I want to talk about tonight is the homeowner's exemption, and this is our most accessible program. It is available to anybody who owns their home and lives in that home as their primary residence as of January 1st. It allows me to reduce your assessed value by $7,000. It's not a huge saving. It's only about 70 bucks a year. The legislature set that rate back in 1972 and probably need to adjust it. However, it is a savings that applies every year once you apply. We estimate that about a third of all property owners in the county do not apply, primarily because they don't know about it. And as a result, there's about $30 million in savings that go unredeemed annually. Here in Laverne, about 32% or over 2,000 eligible homeowners do not apply for the homeowner's exemption, and again, it's because they probably don't know about it. It's very simple to apply. It's a one-time application. You just can download it from our website, and you will save a little bit of money every year on your property taxes. I bring this to your attention because I know that you, I'm sure that your constituents, our constituents, are concerned about saving money, especially at a time when people may be unemployed or on fixed incomes, and I think we want to make sure that they can take advantage of any savings which are available. So that pretty much wraps up the update that I wanted to provide you and introduction to my office. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I know you have a busy agenda. I'm happy to answer questions if you have any, but I'm really grateful to be here in the city of Laverne to introduce myself and my office.
Thank you, Mr. Prang. Appreciate it. Council, do we have any questions for our assessor?
Yes, I do.
Councilmember Carter.
What about property that is such as we have quite a few, mobile home parks in the community? What about those? For the owners that own the property, then we know that the rent space, they obviously take that into consideration when they're raising the rent every year, and we try to keep, you know, encourage that the rates stay lower for the residents, but what about, are there discounts to those owners?
There are no discounts. Property that holds mobile homes is assessed just like all other property. The only time the assessment is changed is on a change of ownership. So if the mobile home park was purchased in 1970, then that means they have a 1975-year base year, and it's locked in at that rate, plus the maximum 2% cost-of-living adjustment that could be applied.
Oh, okay.
The longer the homeowner, the longer the property owner owns the property, the lower their taxes, and they could pass along the savings. But if there's a mobile home park, and it changed hands in the last couple of years, the taxes are going to go way up, and they may pass along those costs to the residents.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Prang? Well, thank you very much. We do appreciate you coming to our town and giving us some information, and thank you again.
My great pleasure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Russi, we have a proclamation. Is that correct?
We do.
We have a presentation proclamation declaring November 2021 as National American Indian Heritage Month, and Mr. Ivey will be receiving the proclamation. Good evening, Mr. Ivey, and on behalf of the city of Laverne, we are... proclamation of Laverne is as follows. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designated the month of November as National Native American Heritage Month, and whereas in honor of Native American Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities, have been planned. Now, though, for I, Tim Hepburn, Mayor of the city of Laverne, to hereby proclaim November as Native American Heritage Month. Thank you, and you'll be receiving this, Mr. Ivey. Do we have anybody for announcements or anything before we start to our consent calendar? Anyone in the audience? Any special announcements? No? We will move to the consent calendar. Have we had anything pulled for the consent calendar, Mr. Russi?
Yes, we have. We have a request for Resolution 2189 to be pulled from the consent.
Okay.
And I do think you also have a speaker card on that item as well.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and approve this consent for what we have so far, and then we'll go back to this one. Do we have a, is there any questions from council on the rest of the consent calendar that was not pulled?
No.
Then I would like a motion, please.
Mayor, I'll move that we approve the consent calendar minus Item 62, Resolution 2189.
Second?
And I'll second.
Vote, please. It's been a long week. Okay, that motion carries. So now we will open up, go ahead, Mr. Russi.
Yeah, as the council is aware, this is the output from the study session that the council had last week regarding some recommendations of changes by Chief Nigg for the department, and you requested bringing those back for formal approval, and this item effectuates those changes. So if we want, we can get a more detailed report from Chief Nigg, or we can check with council on if there are particular questions.
Council, do we have any questions?
No, I just requested to pull this because I believe it's a significant change that we've done, and I approve the change, but just want to make sure that we bring that forward and not just on a consent item.
And I share Councilmember Crosby's desire to recognize this resolution as a very positive step forward for our community.
Councilmembers, any other comments? I do concur with those. We do have a person in the audience, Dini de Boekamp. Would you like to speak on this item?
Good evening, city council. The numbers that were provided by Chief Nigg, if you total them up, the $534,049, $298,500, $235,000 equates to $1,067,549. We should be thankful. This is just a hair over $1 million. That sounds like such a deal when we have our federal government continuously talking about proposals in the trillions of dollars. But something has to give. A spreadsheet was provided by a Laverne resident with accurate metrics that provided clear information that shows that Measure LV will not sustain both the fire and the police department after five years. So I would like to know where the city will continuously get this money from. We could easily have money in general fund if this $10 million bridge wasn't being built for the L-line project and the university. So does this mean the city will still move forward with those projects? I don't think that they'll be canceling that anytime soon. But I'd like to leave that, the option that, you know, residents are going to have to really understand the fact that this means their taxes will be increased. I am one who would like to have our own police and fire department and continue with the tradition that this city has had for over 100 years, but at what cost? And I think the residents really need to think twice about this and just how coincidental that you had the county assessor here just prior to this, talking about taxes, and here we are talking about fire department budget. So they kind of go hand in hand. I think if the city does decide to move forward with this budget increase, that more transparency needs to be provided, not just at the meetings and on the agendas that show what's being received and what's being paid out, but again, a forensic audit needs to be conducted so that people know that this is something that can be sustained long-term. Otherwise, this is burdening the children and future generations of Laverne. I would also like to know how the university factors in because, you know, there was the issue with having a truck with a ladder that can reach the tall building that was just constructed, and maybe future businesses that want to bring their business to Laverne in the, near the Bracket Airport area, you know, skyscraper-type buildings. You know, why isn't some of that burden being placed on, upon them rather than just the residents themselves, especially when we know the majority of the calls for the residents are medical rather than fire? I think these are all important things, and I think this is a good decision that Mr. Crosby recommended, that it not just be consented to, but like more explanation is provided to the residents. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dini. Anybody else like to speak on this matter? Mr. Gabeldon?
I'll do it here instead. Oh, Bald's got it. Got it. I'm very glad to have heard from our fire chief, Nigg, last week. Thank you for your presentation. I believe his presentation was excellent and provided direct language along with the transparency the community has been looking for. He looks to be the leader we have been looking for and imparted impressive knowledge and vision of what needs to be done and the resolve to do it, and I ask that you support him. That said, I was very concerned to hear the following taken directly from his presentation. First, quote, "More with less for many years and without any clear vision to aspire to." Secondly, "In 2007, Fire Station Number Three was not adequately staffed." This is not how it was sold to the community at that time. "In 2020, Laverne lost its third station in subpar staffing, effectively rendering the east-northeast portion of the community without commensurate rapid response afforded to the residents of the other response districts or the places Councilmembers Davis, Lau, and Crosby live in. LA County Fire Department is not in the business of subsidizing our city fire department, and our automatic age agreements have suffered. Why? Rivaling the response times of volunteer fire department in a volunteer setting, encumbered in an unanticipated 217,000 impact to general fund fees regarding response times. To our residents, that means increased property and environmental loss, decreased survivability profile for anyone trapped in a fire, and irreversible brain-or-cell death after six-minute lapse of critical life-death emergency." Quote, "Dfunkt and outdated agreements." Quote, "My plan addresses this 15-year shortfall in strategic planning." Quote, "Station Three is the first station for Laverne's biggest target hazard as our wildland urban interface, as California wildfires continue to grow in size, frequency, and intensity." All taken from that presentation. To all of what I just cited from this presentation, the question begs to be asked, who was watching this house, and why did this council refuse to support the mayor's request to put safety ahead of finances? Finances, mind you, that would have been somewhat mitigated by some of the waste and seemingly obvious suggestions offered by our new chief. Laverne deserves better, and the residents deserve better of your judgment to have put some of its families in harm's way as you squabbled over personal differences and approaches.
Thank you, Mr. Gabeldon. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? JR, do we have anybody on the phone?
Looks like we have somebody wanting to join.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Bowen.
Good evening. First thing I'd like to do is congratulate Chief Nigg on his presentation. It just verified things that have been said for quite a while in the city of Laverne. I find it interesting that the numbers come up to just under 1.1 million, but six or seven months ago, when the mayor presented his plan for 1.2 million, he was ridiculed, and in fact, Mayor Davis called it reckless. I believe it was either not voted on or voted against by four-to-one vote. So down the road, six months later, the new chief suggests spending about the same amount of money, and it is a very welcome approval. So, thank you, Chief Nigg, and thank you, Mayor Hepburn, for suggesting this a long time ago. And also, isn't it true that the city has just, or in June of this year, received $3.8 million from the federal government regarding the COVID funds? So can't that money be applied? I understand we'll get a like amount next year. That's almost $8 million added to the city's budget. And lastly, I'd like to point out, as Mr. Gabeldon just did, or I'm sorry, regarding the Station Three in North Laverne, is the council aware that many, many insurance companies are canceling insurance, homeowners' insurance, in Northern California due to fire hazard concern? They are either canceling those in great numbers, that was what my insurance company told me today, or they're increasing them by 30 and 40%. That was my new bill, just went up over 30%. So is the council aware of that, and it just goes to show how important that Station Three is? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Yeah, I'm waiting for JR. Give me the signal. Anybody else wish to come up and speak on this issue? We'll go ahead and close it, and we'll come back to the dais. Mr. Russi?
Yeah, let me just clarify a couple of things that I think are misunderstood because the way it's presented in the report regarding the numbers. The expenditure appropriation is $534,000 because you have to appropriate the entire expenditure that you're anticipating. The other appropriation is a new revenue that will come in of roughly $300,000. So the offsetting effect is the net impact that the city will have to absorb in other resources other than new revenues is just over $235,000. So really, the net effect of the appropriation is only 235, not over $1 million. But the way it's laid out, I understand how some people get confused with that. So that is one point to make. The other point regarding the ARPA money, we do not believe that this is an eligible use of it because it has to be specifically related to COVID activities or something connected into that. There are particular categories. We will be coming back to council with a study session at your next meeting, as you know, to discuss some of the outlines of ideas of how we see putting that money to use over the next three years and some of the restrictions that do exist with it. As far as the use of getting additional revenues from others, we do have a large building CFD that when new buildings are built, that we do, based on criteria, we do ask them to participate in that, to help fund for that additional ladder truck. So it's not just the university, but there are others that will be supporting that operation going forward. Those are just some of the highlights of, I think, some of the things that needed to be clarified.
Thank you very much. Did, Chief Nigg, did you have any comments or would you like to please come up?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers. I think the only important, one additional important reminder to add is that my presentation wasn't intended to point blame or highlight any of the shortcomings over, you know, the last several years, rather just to show the urgency and why we need to make these changes. Like City Manager Russi said, the ladder truck, the Station Three that being closed, the reason I brought all those up is so that we can move forward in remedying those problems. And I think the big difference between what I presented now and ultimately what may have been presented several months ago is that we had a much broader conversation about how we can make this sustainable with revenues and lost monies that we're not capturing right now, and that's what makes this plan so wildly different from what was presented several months ago.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. We have any questions for Chief? Council?
about how item number four, the 534,000, was a total appropriation, which was a third of your budget, and then including the nearly $300,000 in expected revenue, the net effect was only a little over $235,000 to our general fund versus the $1.5 million that you had proposed. Not that, you know, I'm not trying to disparage anything, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on it. And the last piece I'll say is, Chief, clearly everybody's listening to you and hearing the words that you have to speak, and you speak with great power, so keep up the good work. On that, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2189.
And I will second that.
Vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Nig. Thank you, everyone. Chief, you missed one button, but I'm not pick and picky, but that's okay. Come on, man. Hey, come on.
Now you tell them.
I'm sorry. He was in a drive. I didn't want to, I didn't want to stop him. We have a public hearing tonight, Mr. Rusty, is that correct?
Yes, we do. You have your fourth public hearing in the series regarding the consideration of districting. As you know, NDC, your demographer and consultant that has been hired and engaged to undertake this project, has been to the four hearings, or the three hearings and the fourth being tonight. At your last hearing, you directed, you received some early maps, gave input on some of those maps, as well as direction to come back and repopulate, I guess is the best way to describe the maps on four districts, and then also seek further input from the community. That has been done. We were able to extend the deadline to last Monday to give a little bit more time for people to be able to provide their map input. And now Doug will be able to go through the maps that have been presented that comport to, I think, what are, feel, meet a recommendation, as well as go through any of the others and discuss any questions council would have. After that, I would suggest that you take public comment and then take further action from there. The direction, and I know it's kind of, questions would be, is there sufficient information the council has to take the next step on districting, which would then be to identify how many boundaries would there be, four or five, and then which map to select within that and adopt the appropriate ordinances. So, with that, I will turn it over to Doug.
Good evening.
Good evening. Learned last time to hold this close. So, again, I'm Doug Johnson. I'm joined by Todd Tatum from NDC. It's our pleasure to be with you again. So, we do have some slides to walk through. So, go ahead and skip to the next slide. There we go. Just very briefly, because I suspect mostly council knows this in your sleep, and at this point, probably most of the audience does as well, since we have our regular crowd that's interested in this. So, first of all, we have federal laws. We have to be equal in population. We have to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act. And we have to make sure that race is not the predominant factor in a way that would become racial gerrymandering. After those federal requirements, we have a California statute, the Fair Maps Act, that requires, number one, districts be geographically contiguous; number two, that we avoid dividing neighborhoods and communities of interest as much as practicable; number three, that we follow easily identifiable boundaries, so major roads, rivers, railroads, that kind of thing; and number four, that we keep the districts compact to the degree possible, meaning not bypassing one group of people to get to another group of people. The state law also prohibits any consideration, as they put it, any favor discrimination against or for a political party. So, we just don't look at political data in this process. Those are our statutory requirements. Outside of that, once you meet all those requirements, then you can evaluate plans and choose plans based on what we call traditional redistricting principles or goals. These are not requirements, they're simply traditional considerations in redistricting. You see them listed here. The first one is more of a redistricting idea, so minimizing voters shifted. In this case, we don't have districts that would be shifting them. But you can look at respecting the voters' choices and what the law sometimes refers to as continuity in office, which means, to the degree possible within the other rules, trying to allow each council member the opportunity to run so the voters decide who has earned reelection rather than the lines dictating to the voters. Then you can consider future population growth. And then the last one of these is really another redistricting concept of preserving the core of the existing districts. Next slide, please. When we talk about the Voting Rights Act, the federal Voting Rights Act mainly focuses on where you can draw a majority district of a protected class. Here, we're not at a point where we can draw a majority district, but there is, as you can see in this, in the southwest, a definite concentration in that neighborhood of Latino citizen voting age population or CVAP. So, we want to try to preserve that neighborhood. We want to keep that neighborhood undivided as much as practicable. Next slide. So, again, we've got five initial draft maps. Three of them had five districts, two had four districts, and we went through these at the last meeting. And we go to the next slide. And this is just for the record, so you can have them easily at hand. We have the three five-district maps. And then the next slide. And then the four-district maps. And go ahead to the next slide. And then originally-
Doug, just real quick, which one of those did you repopulate? Because remember the direction of Council 104 or 105?
It's coming up next.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. No, so I split them up a little bit differently than I did the last time. So, then, these are the three. Originally, we'd, for each five-district map, we'd had a little NDC analysis of that map, and the council asked that we flesh those out and provide full statistics for them. So, these are the three maps that we had back at that point. Now, in your package, you have full statistics for them. And then the next slide. Two, the council also asked that we do the same for a four-district option. So, one of the four district options had been population balanced, the other had not been, other public maps. So, we tried to take the ideas that both of those reflected and draw them into a four-district map that you see here. So, that's really the maps from before, and then the council direction from the last meeting. We go to the next slide. Then, as the city manager just mentioned, we did extend the deadline for residents to submit maps and finally got the latest data in the tool, so we were happy to see that. And we saw that people clearly took advantage of that opportunity. It was good to see people interested. So, we got 21 new five-district maps. You can see on the left, three, six, seven, eight of them, either were not population-balanced, that was the case for two of them, was not contiguous. One of them, you see there in the list on the left, had two different pieces of a district. And then there were three that pretty clearly split that southern neighborhood, and two that didn't really split it. They didn't, clearly didn't intend to split it, but the line was close enough that it raised a concern for us. So, we're not ruling those bottom two out in the somewhat united category, but they did raise concerns. On the right-hand side, you can see, we do have a whole bunch of maps, so we're population-balanced, and they kept that southern area together, there are five district maps. So, all of these are available on District R, and I will come back to these later on at the end to compare some other characteristics of them. But the ones on the right certainly meet all the statutory requirements, and then we get more into things that are more discretionary items for the council to consider. So, those are the five district maps. We go to the next slide. We also got five new four-district maps. Because there were, two of them were not population-balanced, one split that southern neighborhood, causing concerns, and then two were population-balanced and kept that southern neighborhood united, so we, since there were only two of them, I could put them on the slide as opposed to the nine on the previous one. So, those are the two, kind of, that check all the required boxes among the four, the new four-district maps. Of course, the earlier four-district maps that were balanced are also still in the mix as well. Go to the next slide. So, obviously, we got a lot of interest, no surprise to the council at this point in this process, and we got a lot of maps. So, what we tried to do was look through and say, okay, we've checked off the boxes of the legal requirements, and then we're down to these nine that really check all four of these boxes. Number one, population balance, obviously that's required. Number two, as we talked about the last meeting, it's not a legal violation, given the numbers, if you go with four districts or five districts. But clearly, the spirit of this California Voting Rights Act would probably be better achieved with a five-district map. That would give the Latino population a stronger voice than a four-district map would. Then, we also looked at them to make sure they meet, to some degree at least, the Fair Maps Act criteria. And then, once all those boxes are checked, so we've checked all the statutory boxes, then we looked at which ones respect the will of the voters and leave the reelection decisions up to the voters rather than dictating to the voters. So, that's how we came up with these nine maps, as suggested focus maps for you to look at. I put them on the slides in the following slides. And again, these are our recommendations. On the link in the earlier slide, we can go to all the maps that have been submitted. So, first of all, we've got the NDC three that you saw last week. They each check each of those boxes. Looking at these three, you can see, you know, 101 and 102 started as analysis of different public maps, but came out almost identical. There's maybe five city blocks that are shifted between those two. So, they're very, very similar maps. 103 was analysis of a different map. You can see it, it works. It's certainly an acceptable map. It has a little bit of oddity on the right-hand side because the green district you see there kind of crosses the freeway just in the corner, but it could still work. And you'll see that was actually something some of the public drew in this latest round as well. So, those three are on the table. The next slide, please. And I'm going through these fairly quickly just to introduce them. Happy to come back and talk in more detail about any of these. So, the first three of the public submissions that are in this set of nine, you can see, it's a little hard to read the numbers, but the numbers are up in the top left. You can see the one on the left, it's highly compact, it does have a little bit of crossing the freeway over on the east side thing, just like the NDC map does, but that could make sense. Often, there is a freeway corridor, community of interest. The one in the middle, it does meet the requirements. It does have a little bit of an odd shape in the north. You see three and four with that kind of odd U shape. Might be a compactness issue. All other things being equal, the one on the left's probably better than the one in the middle, but there could be community, compactness is the last of the statutory requirements, so if there is a community justification for that, it could be good. And then on the right, that map, you know, this is what often happens in redistricting. It's got, four of the five are phenomenally compact districts, you know, very nicely shaped, very oriented. The problem is then there was the leftover. So, you end up with the purple district in the south kind of weaving its way across the city, kind of picking up what's left, I suspect. So, that's a little bit of a concern, but again, it's a compactness concern, which is way down on the list, and certainly could be legally justified and adopted. And then the final slide. We get these three maps, again, five district maps drawn by residents. The one on the left, you get definitely a different approach. You get kind of a vertical orientation, especially in the south of the city, that we don't get in the other maps. You do get, in the middle one, similar to some of the other maps, but a little bit of a shift in the south of where, instead of kind of being an L, the, what's shown is the purple District Three is more rectangular, and then the pink seat goes around it. And then on the right-hand side, again, it checks all the boxes, it's a little bit of an odd shape, so it is compact, it's not as compact as the other maps, but could be acceptable if that made sense from a community of interest perspective in the council's evaluation. So, again, these are recommended maps, all the maps are available, and this is a quick spin through what we have to report. Happy to go into more detail on specific maps and to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, questions or anything we want to discuss right now before we go to public comment on these maps or anything for the demographer?
I think it would be good if council had questions regarding some of the previous maps, or I want to make sure that we get some of those points addressed maybe ahead of time before you open it up for public comment would be my suggestion. You can always come back with more questions later, but in the onset, if there are particular questions, because I know there were some questions raised on the demographics of the four district last time and clarifying some of that, and I think it might be important to get those, if council has those questions, I'm sure the public does as well.
So, I know our significant subgroup is our Hispanic population, correct? Right?
It's certainly the largest of the protected classes, and it has a clear geographic concentration.
How many in the city, for citywide, is that, is the population?
In terms of total population, Hispanics are 36% of the city. And in terms of citizen voting age population, Hispanics or Latinos are 31% of the city.
And then, in the concentrated area, which would be in the lower, what, it's the lower west side?
Yes.
And what's the population there? Like, when you have a five map compared to a four map?
Yeah. Most of the five district maps get up around a 42%, 41, 42% Latino citizen voting age population percentage, and most of the four district maps, even the ones that don't divide it, get up to about a 38 or 37.
So, with the four map, you still, yes, there's a concentration there of about 42%, but with a four map, you still have a concentration of 38, which is still higher than the total population in the city?
Correct.
And it's not a legal violation to have the four map versus the five map?
I mean, all final legal determinations are obviously the city attorney's realm, but when we're evaluating-
That's what you stated.
Yeah. And when we're evaluating maps from a demographic perspective, we're focusing on can you get a majority seat? Because that's what the federal law really requires before you can be challenged.
Even when they don't have a major, it's not a majority even in the concentrated area?
Right. So, you can't get there for the federal Voting Rights Act hurdle, so that's why I talk about where we're really talking about the spirit of the law of trying to enhance their voting strength as much as you can in that area as opposed to any requirement to max out their voting strength.
Okay. Thank you. So, the only, I guess, sort of quasi-technical question I have regarding this effort is that, once we complete a districting effort, there is still, it's not free from scrutiny. There may be somebody or some group out there that might see what we do and feel as though we've either not done it appropriately or whatever and may challenge us in court. Is that true? So, I guess I'll stop there. Is that, is that a true statement?
Yes. Under the California Voting Rights Act, you largely are in a safe harbor. So, you're essentially, there's some little quirks about sequencing they might try to squeeze in. But really, the, once you're in district, you're free from a California Voting Rights Act challenge. As I mentioned, there's the Fair Maps Act criteria, and then there's the federal Voting Rights Act that they might bring a challenge as well.
So, the reason I bring that up is that the spirit of the rules is important or is very important in our selection process than just the letter of the law.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carter?
Yeah, looking at all the different maps that we got, I do not want to split any area up, and so my other concern was the way some are laid out. There was one map, not on this page, but another page, where for one district it was stretched out, where you said it filled in more, just at like last, last district made. It was like, ooh, well, I don't, I don't like that. I like it to be where it's concentrated in one area because they would all have the same concerns for their neighbors in that area, so that's where I stand.
Councilmember Long?
So, can you tell us whether or not you received, I know at the last meeting where we discussed districting, there were some folks who wanted to provide clarification or additional information regarding their maps. Was that received and evaluated as part of this report?
We've, I've seen a lot of public comments from a lot of jurisdictions the last couple of weeks. I don't remember the specific who I heard from and who I didn't, but yes, the public did have the opportunity to weigh in, and those messages were shared with us.
Okay, thank you.
Can, can you go back to the, just to clarify on the four district map? Because I, understanding it'll hold up in court of law, and that was my biggest question at the time that we're doing this, whether it be a five or a four. My preference, obviously, was a four, and would it hold up in a court of law? That's the most important thing, because we're doing this for a reason, because, you know, lawsuit eventually, whatever. Where are we at with, on your estimation on the four maps, there was two or three that actually met the criteria, only one was kind of split a little bit. Is that correct?
Correct. So, the two four-district maps that are shown on this slide 10, both are population-balanced, contiguous, and keep the kind of southwestern neighborhood of concern united, as does the NDC four-district map. But yes, the public did have the opportunity to weigh in and those messages were shared with us.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you go back to the, just to clarify on the four district map? Because I, understanding it'll hold up in court of law, and that was my biggest question at the time that we're doing this, whether it be a five or a four. My preference, obviously, was a four. And would it hold up in a court of law? That's the most important thing because we're doing this for a reason. Because, you know, lawsuit eventually, whatever. Where are we at with, on your estimation on the four maps, there was two or three that actually met the criteria. Only one was kind of split a little bit. Is that correct?
Correct. So the two four district maps that are shown on this slide 10, both are population balanced, contiguous, and keep the kind of southwestern neighborhood of concern united, as does the NDC four district map.
And then some of those, well, some of the other ones too, they do put people in split like Carter-Crosby or Davis-Lau or Hepburn-Carter or Davis-Lau. So there's, are some split areas where they do split the populace as far as the council is, it sets right now, I guess I should say.
Just to clarify, are you talking about this split on this page, on this part?
Yeah.
So this split is referring to the-
No, I understand.
Oh, okay. So you're talking about the-
No, the split, I understand you're splitting the, you're splitting the actual composition. I'm talking about council members being in the same district or whatever.
Yes. Yeah, both of these maps would pair two council members in one district.
And, but you're, and also on the one four at the bottom, you're basically splitting, which is some good. So you have the other two, the other four. So, okay. So just to be clear, a four district with an elected mayor will hold up in a court of law as to the statement of the law, of what you're trying to do as far as getting district voting and splitting our community, but making sure that our populations are balanced and as far as ethnic population are balanced. Is that correct?
I mean, nothing is ever guaranteed, obviously, but yes, if I thought-
That's the ultimate.
Yeah, if I thought it was kind of dead man walking, which we often do on some maps, it would have a big stamp on it saying, we recommend not adopting this map. Our recommendation is you're probably safer the other way, but no, I don't think this is a blatant violation of my law.
Okay. Any other questions for a demographer, counsel? Let's go ahead and open up our public hearing, please. Anybody who wants to speak on this? We're going to try to keep it to a three-minute, but this is, this is rather an important issue. If you do need a little extra time, please let me know, but we do have a lot of speakers tonight, so we want to, you know, we'll be here as long as we have to, but let's keep in mind, we have other people who would like to talk.
May I approach?
Yes, you may, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening.
I don't want to get tackled on my way here. City councilmen, folks here and folks that are listening, my name is Mashallah Kasha Falgita, a long last name. And, and I understand the spirit of the law and I understand the letter of the law. I've been in law enforcement for 22 years and I get that. But here, we're, we're talking about people that live throughout the whole city of Laverne. If we want a mayor, we want an elected mayor. I, I'm, this is just me talking, that I would like to see, if we have no other opportunity to go with the four districts and elected mayor, I want to know who my mayor is. I remember Mayor Bill Kinstaff. I was a young kid and I still remember him till this day. I see him daily. God bless him, walking his dog. Mayor Kendrick, Mayor Hepburn. We have an elected mayor that we can see and we can say, sir or ma'am in the future, this is my problem. Can you please help me? Not, which is the mayor this year, I don't even know who. Let's talk about what one person is that represent our city, not just here, maybe other counties, maybe other states that represents us, that we know who they are. I understand the demographics of this whole city. I'm one that has lived throughout this whole city, everywhere, in all the districts. But to me, I've always seen it equal. I hate the fact that we have to sit here and separate our city based on what others that don't even live in the city can tell me about my city that I've worked and lived and raised my children here. This is just my opinion. I'd love to see, if no other opportunity presents itself, let's try with four and elected mayor. Let's just do the right thing, not just what's right right now. And that's the letter of the law. So I understand the spirit of law, blame them all for it, but I understand also the letter of the law. And if it puts us in litigation, some of our attorneys on the city here in council, no, litigation all too well. So if this letter of the law is the case and we can do four and have an elected mayor, please, just listen to us. If the city council works for us, please listen to us. Thank you. That's all I have to say. God bless.
Thank you, Kesh.
I want to discuss the inherent problems with this entire mapping process. I personally chose a four district with an at-large mayoral seat style of map. Unfortunately, it's not presented up there because it never got analyzed, although I did submit it before the requested timeframe. The map that I created is a four district map. It does show a population deviation because of the project that's going to be built for the Gold Line or L Line, however you refer to it, which is going to be approximately 2,500 units, which will meet the RINAs numbers for the state of California. So when you look at from a population base, this is much less, but once those units go in, which will be, quote, affordable housing, you will most certainly have more Latinos, Hispanics, however you want to refer to them, moving into that area. So then it would create a much larger race base, which he says is a violation of mapping. So that would be a problem. We do it now based equally, based on race, which is a problem because, and I don't, many people may not know this, but there is a big difference between race and ethnicity. Hispanics racially are classified as Caucasian and they are ethnically Hispanic or Latino. So this map says white, Hispanic, and Asian. Where's African-American? They are left out of this. They are also a minority that should be included in this as they're part of this city, as we just saw with Mr. Ivy, who's the predominant person in the city. I think if this was truly a fair process, we would have two links, one for a four district map and one for a five district map. Because I chose four districts, it's telling me I have a population deviation of almost 35%. So it automatically gets disqualified and doesn't get considered because of that reason. Not to mention that the language that was used on the website, it says, the rules, and this is a quote directly from the website, "The rules are complicated and sometimes quite vague," exclamation point. "The sentence ends with not just the period, but an exclamation point." According to, according to Merriam-Webster, "An exclamatory sentence is one that expresses a strong and forceful emotion." So now I have the authors of this website telling me that I'm an idiot because it's too complicated and it's vague and I shouldn't even waste my time pursuing this endeavor. So how is this language not offensive, oppressive, and odious? This obtrusive language is not psychologically deterring. The descriptive language on the mapping website refers to some races as black rather than African-American, Hispanic instead of Latino. I want someone to tell me how that is not as offensive and disrespectful to me as a I want the city to, I want someone from the city to tell me when our council is going to actually represent the people that voted for them onto this council and mayoral seat. Instead of succumbing to the bullies affiliated with this political referendum, the council should have waited until the city of Santa Monica's appeal case was heard, because this will all be for nothing if that case is upheld. And then another lawsuit will pursue because it will have to be reversed. For the record, I am officially requesting that the city remain an at-large voting for both council and mayor, but should the district voting be coerced upon the residents of this coun, by this council, then I am in favor of a four district with an at-large mayoral seat. I leave you with a quote from one of the greatest presidents, Mr. Abraham Lincoln. "America will never be destroyed from the outside. If we falter and lose our freedoms, it is because we destroyed ourselves. This is exactly what this council is continually doing on each and every order of business listed on meeting agendas, which city staff encourages the council to vote in favor of." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Danita.
Black polo and jeans memo, so I'm in uniform. I might need 30 extra seconds. I promise, I tried to time this.
You are granted.
Thank you. Change for the sake of change does not always bring good things. And I feel that this process has not been fair and fairly presented. I feel that there's, there's implied bias, direct bias, and as spoken by tonight, can't get clear answers where the spirit is used in lieu of the law. I want to remind everybody that this was brought upon the city based on the fear of litigation exclusively. And then it turned into a party of why it's good otherwise. If by the law, we are entitled to proceed with the four district and at-large mayor model, I don't see any good reason why we shouldn't. I, I think that I'm probably one of those folks that has been the biggest pest and have submitted many documents to the city council, to the city manager, to the demographers. And to support my claim of some of the biases and in support of what Ms. Bochamp said, Mr. Tatum had responded to some of my questions regarding the process. And I just going to quote here, and this one I'm kind of paraphrasing, but it is a quote, "In July, the city, the Laverne City Council unanimously approved a resolution to initiate the process to switch from at-large elections. The council's direction in that resolution was for five districts and thus the tools and data reflect that vote. Bias, flawed outcomes. In regards to the questions you raise concerning District R, the tool, and what appears to be deviation errors in the maps you have drawn, this is not an error. Since the system is configured to draw five district maps, users will need to track and calculate the population bounds on their own. Should they wish to create a four district map, similar to if someone were to draw a map by hand, okay, well, I'm not going to draw a map by hand and I use the tool and I did it within 10. But the tool doesn't really provide you the opportunity to explain yourself and why it is that one map has reasons for its construction over another. There is some opportunity to provide some feedback, but that wasn't really the spirit of what it was that it was in writing. So for the retired community in the city, to which all of you probably have somebody that is close to you in that category, where is the warning to the user with instructions to resolve these issues? How does this not surface, on the surface in part, influence and flawed outcomes? You've got 31 maps." That was the number provided to you, to me? Thirty-one maps in a household of 10,000. Ask yourselves why? Why only 31? Is it because perhaps the process has been flawed? Perhaps the outreach has been insufficient? So I found that of the primary choices for promoting and to communicate this message, it's been social media. So is everybody's grandma, mom, grandfather, uncle, anybody, everybody on Twitter? They on Facebook? Are they? That's where we put our messaging. But yet, an additional 12,550 funds were made available to spend on communicating what this is about. Did anyone at one time ever think that they should have done a mailer? Make sure that everybody in the city was notified of what was going on? No. Apparently not. So in conclusion, I have a lot to say, but with these facts, what is best for Laverne now is four election districts and availing the entirety of the Laverne community, their choice for an at-large mayor candidate who will serve as our, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabeldon. Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Come on up, Lilly.
My name is Lilly Breno. Good evening, everyone. I hate Max, so I have this one. So maybe I talk a little bit more than three minutes, please grant, because English is my fall language, okay? As a citizen of Laverne, I live in Seventh Street, so I saw the zizap, five district map. I live in north of Bonita, west of the Y Avenue, so I belong to all different categories, different districts. It was so funny and ridiculous. I tried to talk to my neighbor who fall with me, widen in Y Avenue, we know like the hundredth neighbor in that area. Pretty much none of them on social media, okay? So yeah, they didn't come today because I think they will only do one voting, vote for somebody, not really present on their vote for, okay? So I tried to do more to follow this case. I last time, I, I come every time, okay? People might see my face, my, my style, okay? So actually, I'm, I'm colorblind. I don't really think I am Asian-American. I think I'm just American. I repeat again, again, again. Now, follow the, my son, they learn from public school, I should belong to Pacific Islander, okay? Since my grandma, they are, the whole family live in the island in Malaysia. So, so what? I come from Hawaii too. So they get present. So how about my parental right, okay? I mean, not parents' voting rights. So it's kind of a little frustrating and then emotion because I pulled my kids out from public school this morning, okay? So I think I face a big fight, something really sneaky and wrong in our community. I hate what's happening, but is it make sense? I come again, again, again. Actually, the last minute, I submit the map by hand, one district, at-large mayor, that's what we want. Thank you. I put in office. And then my husband just laughed at me and like, oh, okay, not really makes sense.
Lilly, if you could, Lilly, if you could raise your mask.
Quick, very quick, okay.
Lilly.
How about my face?
I'm going to put tape on it.
Yeah, sorry. So I have to do this way. I don't really care, okay? Yeah, when I believe Max, I donate a lot of mass last year, but when I don't believe, so, okay. I follow my heart. So my husband submit four, four district with a large mayor, so he submit that, but not really present here, so, but I still haven't give up. So, but I have very strong belief. So if any one of you want to run mayor someday, come to convince me, I, I, maybe I will vote for you, because I think you do good job in the, for our future. No problem, I vote for you. I ask everyone vote for you. If you think you do better job than team, good, no problem, we vote for you, right? So I, I'm thinking, I vote for team, mayor team last, last time, so I think you really did pretty good job because very difficult COVID-19 lockdown, so I saw our mayor all the time, you're selfie and then promo. I just really cute and lovely, you know? It's just like a big family. I really like what you do, what you did for us because your passion, right? So anyone could do better job in the future, come to competition, right? So we vote for anyone who the best. So, but we need a one mayor to present. Everybody, you just run for it, get number one, right? The best vote. So I just thinking, I come here still want to protect my, my voting right, because if anyone said he's not under present because the voting act, we will get bit chop because the law still, still blackmail, okay? How about my, my voting right? I, it took me 15 years to become citizen and get my voting right. So of course I would come here to protect my voting right. It's so ridiculous. When I see the five districts, zizap, zizap, I belong to different district. I'm just really think it's so ridiculous. So my neighbor, I talked to them, they didn't come today. They didn't really give up, but just, they just will vote by their vote next time, so. So I hope everyone sit here, you can make the decision for our future, our city's future. Just think about it, you might not sit here next, next, next election. So please, when you still have chance, think about our tiny, small city, you know? So please, just a big family. Thank you.
Thank you, Lilly. I just want to clarify something that as a city, just because I was mayor, we as a council in the city did a really good job during COVID. This was a tough time for all of us and I think we all rose to the occasion, so it takes a strong council. It does take a mayor, but it does take people to get along and get this stuff done, along with our city management. Wasn't perfect, but I think we did an excellent job. So anyway, just to clarify that. Thank you, Lilly. Anyone else wish to speak on that? Anna, please.
Anna Anderson, Sloan Drive. I'm appealing to you people to please, the council, please, four districts and a mayor. Now, we're not talking about next election or the election after, we're talking about, you know, in the future. You're going to make a decision for this city for the future. And we're not happy that it's going to be divided at all, because of course, we're losing our voting rights. I can't vote for the person I want. I have to vote for somebody in my district. It is voter suppression. But at least if we have a chance to vote for one person that represents all of us that we all voted for, we would feel much better. And I think we should do that. And I think, hey, if you want to have five districts, fine, but we have to have a mayor too. So put another seat up there, if you have to do that. But we have to have somebody that we feel that we can all vote for and that represents us on the council. Because even though you guys are going to be divided and you're going to have your own districts, you know, it, it's, like I said before, it's stupid. It's not going to solve anything. It's not going to, and, and the more districts you have, the easier it is for somebody to get in there who has their own agenda. So you're dividing- So you're dividing up the five, it's going to be, it's easier for somebody to get in there because the whole city's not watching. You know, we're not at a big auditorium and listening to everybody. So it's easier for people to get into these little districts that have their own agenda, and we want somebody up here that can represent us, that we all voted for. And remember, this is not going to be for the next election or the election after. This is going to be forever. So I appeal to you to please look at that. Like I said, if you want five districts, fine. But we're going to have to have a mayor too. That's all I got to say. Please.
Thank you, Anna. Anyone else like to come up and speak on this issue? Please, come on up. If you haven't filled out a card, if you could state your name and your address, please, and you can fill the card out after, or we'll fill it out for you. We won't penalize you for that, just if you could state where your address is and your information. Thank you.
My name is Judy Nagri, and you want my address? 4095 Fruit Street. I've never done this before, but I moved into Laverne in 1974. I raised a family by myself, and I have my son who's raising his family in the same town. I love this town. It means a lot to me. And I don't understand, at my age, why everything has to change. It's good the way it is. It's good the way it's been. I'm proud of this town. I'm proud to say that I live here. And I don't understand why we cannot leave things alone. It's working. It's not broken. I'm sure there's other rules that I don't know anything about, about these districts. Fine, have your districts, but don't split up the people in their minds, because that's what's going to happen. You're going to have different districts. You're going to have somebody in this district that's stronger and stronger willed than the person in this district. So they're going to get everything they want. That's going to cause confusion and anger for this district. It's going to break up our community. And we have a beautiful hometown. That's what it's all about. And as far as the mayor goes, we want one mayor. I don't want, I don't know how you're working it, but I don't want four different times. You'd be the mayor for four months, and you'd be the mayor for four months. So we complained to this mayor, but his time is getting near, so we'll just hold on to that request for the next guy's problem. And it keeps going around in a circle. Nobody sees our side of it. We are the people. We should, we voted. Doesn't that mean anything anymore? Please, just leave it alone. Do your districts if that's what the new rules are, God forbid. But let's have one mayor so we can know who we're talking to, talking for. Please, leave it alone. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Members of the dais, I appreciate your being here to listen to us. For me, it's very personal. My father was mayor for many years. My uncle was mayor for many years, and you go back previous generations, there have been elected council members in my family for a long, long time. I too am not a fan of the districting, but if it's going to happen, it's going to happen. I do want an elected mayor. I think it's important to the continuity of the city. I do understand that, you know, sometimes a mayor gets in, and it's hard to vote him out. So what do you do? Maybe a term limit? And what's appropriate there? I don't know. But I do want to elect the mayor for the city. I think that's, we should have that right as a resident to elect the mayor. That's my position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. That's okay, just state your name and address, please.
Carol Ramos, 1400 Block, Bonita, advocate for the fire department. And I agree with what she said. I feel that Laverne should not have this districting, period. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. I believe that this districting is going to cause chaos. The other day, I shared with the Hispanic community that are my relatives on Walnut Street by Fairplex about this and how they felt about it. And you know what they said? Is it broken? Are we broken? And I thought that was pretty good way of putting it. And I said, no, we're not broken. It's what the city council wants to do. They said, well, did they ask for our permission? Have we asked the residents of Laverne, how do you feel about this districting? By mail? Have we? I really don't know. I guess that's a no. They're against it. I'm against it. Too many cooks in the kitchen will spoil that broth. I want to be able to vote for Tim, for one person, just like we have the option of voting for who's going to be the president of the United States. That's how I feel about it. So please, just leave Laverne the way it is. You're going to create chaos by doing districts. Oh gee, I live in this district. Oh, this district gave you a better deal than me. How come? Maybe I ought to move out of this district and move over there. You're going to start dividing people. And that's not what the city of Laverne is. We all feel as one community in the city of Laverne. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Kathy Newland from Foothill Terrace. I see the acceptance of a five district ruling without a mayor at large as polarizing the votes of an entire city of residents. This is exactly what you are professing to change, voting rights of all the people. You are defending, you're defeating the purpose of the districting idea. Two wrongs don't make a right. We all deserve the right to vote for one person to lead our city.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else wish to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. Kathy Kalusek, Third Street. So I'm not in favor of this either, because I like things the way they are. But unfortunately, it's Washington and Sacramento that are doing this to us. It's not Laverne, it's not you people up on the dais, and we have to do this. I don't necessarily agree that once it's done, if things change and we can go back, I think a person could go back. If it changes, it may never change, but unfortunately, it's out of our power. But I will say, there seems to be a real misconception regarding mayor versus city council members. The fact is, the mayor has no more power than the other council members in our city. The mayor's a figurehead, the mayor signs contracts, runs the meetings, but you all have the same power. Everybody's one vote. Everybody cares about all of us. And I think you're all, all five of you are caring. Obviously, you've shown a spirit of, you know, you volunteer, you give a lot of your time, you're all articulate, you read a lot, you have to comprehend a lot. When you don't understand it, you ask about it, maybe it's not your expertise. But I think any one of you could do a great job of representing our city as mayor. So in my opinion, if we have to do this, it really needs to be the five districts with the rotating mayor. Because a four district, you're going to have two votes in one district, and that's not going to be fair. So that is my opinion.
Wow, nasty.
Please, please, everybody, let's respect each other. Let's respect each other. Anybody else wish to speak? Come on up, Joe.
Very briefly, I am for, for council people and a mayor at large. There are a couple of people on the council that I firmly believe are up there for their own good and not for ours, and I object to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Please, come on up. And please, let's respect each other at the podium, please, when you're up speaking.
Hello, good evening. My name is Yvonne Gayogos. I live in College Green, and I go by being called a Chicana, if that matters to people here in the room. Thank you so much. I too did bring up the point about who has power, right? Whether it was the mayor, whether it was the city council, and I've come to learn that all the votes are equal. I understand Mayor Hepburn that. You know, I see your minute with the mayors, and I see at the ribbon cuttings and things like that. So it's more ceremonial, I think, right? I understand also with some of the people that I've spoken before, where they feel like if we're going to have the districts, it makes them feel better to vote for one mayor. I get that. I don't think that the fear that people have is, is really something that is going to come to fruition. As I've said before, I did come from a city, or moved from a city, that did have district voting, seven districts, and a rotating mayor. And it worked out great. Neighbors weren't pitted against neighbors, districts were not pitted against districts. And as a matter of fact, when, when the person that was elected in my district became mayor, we were also happy and proud he was one, somebody in our neighborhood, and forgive me, forgive me, getting a little emotional, but as Mr. Cosby knows, he just recently passed away in the, in, while being mayor. So they're really, I don't, I don't understand where the fear is coming from. I don't also understand, someone mentioned four months, and I'd like for somebody to clear that up. I don't think that someone would become mayor for four months. That wasn't the way it was done in my previous experience. I also want to reiterate something that Kathy just said. I think each one of you are brilliant, and I do believe that each one of you would be excellent as mayor. You are all worthy of taking the position in a rotating, in a rotating mayor position. So I don't want any of you to think that you aren't worthy, but you all are. That's all I'd like to say, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Cynthia Tyner, Gardenia Lane. I'm a newcomer to this redistricting issue. So I'm learning a lot tonight and heard very little about it prior to. I agree with what one gentleman said. I think that the entire city of Laverne, every member who lives, every citizen who lives in Laverne, needs to know about this issue, because I don't think that everybody does. I look at Facebook, that's all that I look at as far as avenues where things can be read or learned about this. But I think everyone gets their mail. So I think it would be wise to do something like that, to inform people so everybody has, is fairly informed. The word redistricting, as far as I can see and what I'm learning, is another word for division. I prefer not to do this at all. Redistricting versus as it is now, I'd rather keep it as it is now. Representation of council and member should be equal amongst all members, all of you, at all times, not just when one council member's sliver has an issue or a need. One mayor to be dedicated to all of the city all the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak on this matter?
Go ahead, Mr. Bowery. Good evening again. As a few people have mentioned, letting the citizens of this city understand and be aware of a crucial, maybe the most crucial aspect of the city's future is critical. When the city wanted to pass Measure M, the tax increase, there was mailers, as far as I know, sent to every home in Laverne. They spared no expense in order to raise our taxes and get the support to get that done. Yet, in the single most important issue facing this city's future, nothing has been notified to the citizens. As many people have shown and talked about, you rely on Facebook, you rely on social media, except many times, people on this council blast social media for the terrible example and terrible things that are said. Yet, when it comes to this, that's where you want to use it. You do not want to notify the citizens. That is a shame. Every homeowner, every citizen in the city should be well aware of that. You have 31 maps. I'm sure many of them have been multiples. So out of a citizen rate of 32,000 people, you have 31 maps? That should give, that should send you a signal right there. And by the way of memory, I hear people talking about the quote ceremonial aspect of the mayor. Well, the last two mayors acted like they were the people in charge, and nobody ever disputed that. Yet, last March, a year ago March, we had an election, and the new mayor unseated the old existing mayor. This new mayor, Mayor Hepburn, won with over 5,800 votes, and he beat the existing sitting mayor by over 1,300 votes, or roughly 26%. He received more votes than any other candidate for any other office in the city. What does that tell you? What it tells me is the four sitting council people want to eliminate that ever from happening again. And this is the way they're going to attempt to do it. When you're looking at the segments, the districts, you distinctly see a line at the 210 freeway, three to two south of the freeway. You hire a Democratic operative to do the maps, and he directs, as many people have said, directs people in the, in the way he wants them to go. You should all be ashamed of yourself for doing this. Watching the last few meetings, I've seen multiple, multiple people get up and speak and hear. I am not in town, it's 10 o'clock where I'm at, but this is so important to me, I'm sitting here watching this entire proceeding, procedure. I wish I was there. You have one or two people that grudgingly say, well, if we have to. That is one of the phrases I've heard a lot, if we have to. But the majority, the vast majority of the people that take the time to come to the meetings, all say, don't do it. I shouldn't predict, but I will predict that tonight, you'll see a four to one vote for a five district, no mayor position, and we... a five district, no mayor position, and we all know why. You can't get elected without changing the rules, and that is a shame. We are the people of Laverne, not, you live here, we elect you. If you want to grow it, if you want to run, and you want to have a fair and honest election, leave it the way it is. But if you change this to five districts, three against two routinely, you will have nothing but problems in the future, and for the city of Laverne, that is an awful, awful fate. Leave this alone, or leave it to the voters. Just like you have said regarding the fire issue, put it on the ballot, let people know what this is all about, and let them vote. Please, do the right thing. Thank you.
Go ahead, Pam.
All right, this is Pam Berry. I live in Laverne. I've lived in Laverne since I was a young mother. Now I'm a young grandmother, and I live in Laverne. I don't live where there's little borders and rivers and whatever. I live in Laverne, the whole town. I shop here, I dine here, I have friends here. I don't think we need to be chopped into little pieces. I think we are a small, unique town with a lot of diversity and a lot of different people everywhere, and we all get along. It's okay. We don't need to be chopped into little pieces. The idea of five districts, just mathematically, is more divisive than four. The idea that any one person can get two votes is kind of random, because everyone has one vote, but the difference is, who can you elect? Who is there that would be electable by the whole city at large? That's the mayor. The council members, if they want to have a district, I do not think it should be any more than four. I'm really frustrated that the tools were designed to default to five. I have submitted my own maps, I did it from the hospital last week, and I didn't see anything that bore resemblance to what I've seen that I thought were good maps for four and a rotating, and a, and an at-large mayor. All of the maps that I saw were five, and they were just chopped little bits. Didn't make any sense at all. So, again, I think it would be wise to wait until after the Santa Monica decision is final. I think it would be wise to notify all residents of this plan. I think it would be wise to let the residents vote, and I think first and foremost, with the maps that were turned in, this whole thing is just not even done fairly at all, because the agenda of the demographer is very clear. The agenda of the council is very clear. But the voice of the people, the voice of the people is what matters. And we have heard a lot of comments tonight, both in person and probably more on Zoom coming. There's probably a lot of emails. Just please, stop trying to break us up into smaller pieces. I liked the map, I think it was 104, it had four districts and a mayor at large, but if I were to draw my own personal preference, the city of Laverne is the city of Laverne, one district unified, and that's what I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Thomas Allen, Cendy Street. I have a few reasons why I would urge the council to vote for five districts and a rotating mayor. First, I think five districts means, brings better representation of diverse, of the diversity of the city. Five districts means greater representation, because the districts are going to be smaller. This means that fewer people have access to a representative, which I think better increases representation. I don't think it's enough to just tell people to show up, when people show up and they are heckled and bullied for having diverse opinions. So we need representation up on the diets. Secondly, I don't think it showcases the diversity of Laverne. There are vastly diverse communities in Laverne, and not all of them feel represented by one mayor. Neither does one mayor accurately represent what is happening in Laverne. The last couple of mayoral elections are evidence of that, like our city was literally split between two people. I think our city would have been less torn apart if both of them would have eventually been mayor. I think the third thing is that everyone doesn't feel represented by the mayor. The fact that the city is as divided as it is now due to the last mayoral election is evidence of the fact that one mayor does not suffice for adequately representing the will of the people. Every mayoral election becomes contentious, or at least it has been the last few. That in and of itself is indication that people do not feel represented by having that seat belong to one person. Next, I think it creates more political stability. All five seats rotating on four years creates more stability as opposed to having three elections every year, one of which we know is going to cause people to re-intrinch themselves into political ideologies that are not productive or helpful for conducting city business. So I would think that more political stability is better not only for the city, but also the performance of what the city is able to do in representing its people. And finally, looking at the four district maps that were shown, it appears that there's a high likelihood that there'll be at least three representatives coming from north of Laverne. The median income of the city is 88,000, yet that demographic is very rarely represented north of the 210 or baseline. The maps as drawn means that there's a very strong likelihood that three of the five representatives are going to come from an area that does not accurately nor adequately represent the political interest or will of the city at large. So if the motivation is to increase political representation, then I think five districts is the only way to go. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for all that you do for the city.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, Patricia Sweetman, Gardenia Lane. Over the last couple of weeks, I kind of did an unofficial ballot of SMM people going around the city and asked them, you know, what do you think of the redistricting that, or the districting that they're considering? And out of, out of about the 10 people that I asked, eight had no clue or very little information on what was going on. That leaves only two that were informed about what was going on and could talk to it. If I hadn't, didn't attend these council meetings, I also would not have a clue what was going on. I'm not a Facebook person, and therefore, if that's where all the information is going, I would not, I would not be savvy to this information. Therefore, what's going to happen if this goes through, if you vote on the four or the five districts, and it comes to the first or second voting? My guess is people won't vote, because they won't have a clue what they're doing, and that's very concerning. People have talked about not taking our voting rights away. Well, how about people that can't understand what the heck is going on unless there's going to be a mass mailer and mass presentations? I think that less and less people will tend to be involved in our city, in our voting, in representation, and, and that is very, very concerning. I would like to see this put up to the residents of Laverne to vote on, whether they want a district or not district. I prefer if we do it, the four with a mayor at large, but leave it up to the voters of Laverne to make that decision. The other thing I had a question on, now that we've gone through all these exercises of building the maps and et cetera, if I recall correctly, if we don't do this, and there is, and we're talking about fear of, of court case, we would have 90 days to put something in place. Why rush it through now? We've done a lot of the light work, we've done a lot of the mapping. What would be the harm in waiting to see not only the Santa Monica result, get more people involved and understand what's going on, but also if something does come up and we need something in 90 days? We, we have a lot of it already in place. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name's Ruben Soto, and I'm a resident of Laverne. I wasn't going to speak today, but I was shocked and disappointed at the disrespect shown to my fellow community members who spoke against the opinion of the more outspoken speakers tonight. I'd like to first commend you on your patience with the varied commentary today. I ask that you follow the guidance of the experts in deciding tonight. An at-large mayor, while perhaps legally defensible, does not allow the highest degree of representation. The whole point of districting is to prevent the concentration of power into the hands of a majority and helps ensure the voice of minority groups are heard. There does not seem to be a clear understanding of the role of mayor, and an at-large election would not achieve what some seem to believe it will. It should be easier for an individual to run, to represent a smaller district, and a greater number of districts achieves that. I see the recommended plans, but did not hear a clear explanation of communities of interest that should be considered besides the Latino population. The consultant did speak to compactness, but he at the same time stated that it should be the lowest consideration. This council in determining the district should be able to clearly articulate those communities of interest. For example, should the university and Old Town Laverne be in one district? Should the commercial area on Foothill be in one district? Should the industrial areas below Arrow all be in one district? The decision of this council should be defensible, and all determining characteristics clearly understood and explained. I support a five district plan as the most representational, and I thank you for your time and your work.
And if there are any others via Zoom that would like to raise their hand, please do so. And Mr. Mayor, we will have one person that'll need to call after.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to speak out, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to speak up for many that I know have been trying to call in, and they wish they could have gotten on Zoom before 6 o'clock. Please do listen to those of us who have done their, who have done their research, who are talking to their neighbors, the people who are not calling in, the people who did not get a mailer, the people who are not on Facebook, and listen to us about doing the four districts with one mayor. This illusion that splitting things up more means things are more equitable is a complete fallacy, and it's, it is so incredibly divisive, and all it does is, it, all it does is dumb everything down for everybody. Instead of having the opportunity to have really good people shine in their leadership, we're going to end up having people who are filling the seat quite often, because not everybody who gets elected is always the right person, and over time, it ruins cities. And there's a lot of cities across this country that are, that are 100, 100% a complete reflection of that. And I grew up in a city that has been, has been districted for a long time, and it is actually a reflection of that. Just, please do, and it's been brought up many times, listen to the people who live here, listen to the people who have been participating, and lastly, I'm also a little bothered by the fact that the consultant, whom we at the very beginning pointed out some of their possible biases, only, only promoted five district maps in his presentation tonight. Considering that the people, and it's our taxes that are paying him, and it's the people who actually elect all of you, the fact that there were not at least one four district map included is completely, just, it's just not even genuine to what is going on anymore. Anyways, I really hope you all think about this and digest it hard. All of you can be up for reelection, because all of you can be recalled.
We're going to take just a real quick five-minute recess, and then we'll continue public comment, if you don't mind. So, need to use the facilities, please help yourself. I'd like to call the meeting back to order at 8:24. I didn't hit my gavel last time, did I? We have more speakers, I think, who would wish to, oh, we have, we have one on the phone, and we'll get back to you guys in a second.
If there are any others via Zoom that would like to speak, please use the raise-your-hand feature. And Mr., oh, there we go. Go ahead, Mr. Bell.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, yeah, I had a little phone. Hey, I just wanted to say, I know it's, it's really troublesome for the city on this vote. Regarding district cities, I've experienced with them, quite a few of them, and none of them, none of them ever turned out really well. I mean, on the first year, it seems like they're doing pretty good. Really, it depends on the amount of money that they bring in. I don't know how Laverne's going to turn out in a district city with four or five, but in the end, there's going to be a lot more barriers to just getting things done. So, I just want everybody to know. But, I'm just one vote. Whatever you guys want to do on your end, that's on you, but I would hope that you put this to a vote for the city at large to determine, because there's a lot of information people just don't know about. Again, I do know a lot about district cities, and the majority of them, they just never turn turn out well. They look good on the outside, but on the inside, it's more corrupt and corroded, and, uh, things just never get done. And I like to know who's going to be in charge of the district that makes the more money, the most money, because we all know where it's going to lead to. Whoever is in charge of that district is going to pretty much control the city. You would say that we have, uh, certain laws in place to protect against that or process for that, but in reality, that's just for the voters to feel good. We know that just, it just doesn't play out that way. So, yeah, I'm 100% against, uh, district cities, so, and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Hi, this is Brittany Allison, um, D Street. I, um, am calling in, as I've done a couple of times, just in hopes of sharing the hope and opportunities that I see in Laverne. Um, there have been so many callers call in to express how united Laverne is and how neighborly we are, right? So much so that they say there is no reason to have districts. And, and so I just wonder, is the opportunity that lies within the city of Laverne to show all of our neighbors what it would look like to move to a district city, move to these five districts that enable close representation, enable, um, lower barriers of entry into, um, into local elections and the such, um, lower campaign costs that enable us to spend that money directly on residential services and the such? What if we could move to that type of district city and still hold on to the neighborly unity and community that we represent? Um, if all of these things are true, that I've heard so many callers say, that they speak to their neighbors and we're all one and we're all unified, districts isn't going to magically change that, right? It, it, it's going to be no different than the fact that you live in different neighborhoods and you have different interests and you have, uh, different histories and understandings and education and professions, and those differences don't divide us, and these districts don't have to divide us either. Um, so I do support five districts. I do look forward to seeing the opportunity that lies in how the city of Laverne can make that look. Um, thanks.
Go ahead, Ms. Carson.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hello?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Wayne Carson. I'm, uh, resident of Laverne on Bonita Avenue. And while I'm not really in favor of the district thing, I know it's inevitable, but just a few comments on this, whether it be four districts, five districts, we still need to have a, uh, at-large mayor. Um, with a rotating mayor, I think it was even mentioned a little earlier, there's going to be so much inconsistency and, uh, no continuity with anything. Who do we talk to if we need to get ahold of somebody? Who represents the city in statewide matters or countywide matters? Somebody has to contact the city of Laverne. Who do I talk to this week? Oh, it's not him, I got to talk to that person. So, uh, that's just my two cents worth, but, uh, we have to have, uh, somebody over the, uh, the whole thing, whether they have, uh, only one vote or no vote, but it leads to some kind of continuity to the entire process. Thank you.
Anyone else via Zoom? Mr. Mayor, that's all the hands that were raised, and I have no request via email.
Kathy. Come on up, please. What's that? Kathy, actually, you've spoken already on the matter. I'm sorry.
I just have two questions to clarify because of what's going on.
I, I have to say, no, we can't do that. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, part of the mix-up here is we, nobody was heckling Kathy. It, what she said didn't make sense.
We'll, we'll clarify that after. I've, I've got that on note, the two-votes situation.
The two votes and then the 4.8, uh, it is, if you're rotating mayor, for two years, five into, it's 4.8 ma, uh, months. So that, those were the only two things.
Gotcha. We'll clarify that. Thank you. Mr. Henley.
How are you? Bill Henley. I live in, uh, Laverne here on St. Mark Avenue. I'm, I'm new to this whole deal. I didn't know really much about it. I'm not a Facebook person. I don't like division. I like what I heard earlier, one Laverne, one mayor. Um, I think we're all, we're all a family here. I think that anytime you divide things up, it's like siblings, you know? If you have three, three kids in a family, you usually have two against one, and it's going to work that way. I think that if we have, if we have a rotating mayor situation, we're not going to get anything done. Our city's not going to prosper. Our city's going to just kind of stagnate. We're going to be fighting each other to see who has control. We're going to be, we've, we've tried this before in our history, where the United States tried to divide at one time. I'm sure we all know about the Civil War. What happened? Together as one country, together as one city, we're a lot stronger this way. I don't think there's any division in the city other than what we're creating right now. If I had to choose, if it were up to me, one city, one mayor. But I think that if we have to, if, if, if this is being mandated upon us, four districts, one mayor elected. We've got to have somebody in charge. Anytime you have a corporation, anytime I have decisions, I have to make it work, I'm glad I'm the person in charge. I'm glad I don't have a, a co, a co-manager or a co-GM or somebody like this, that I have to bounce things off of when it comes to making the right decision, because no decision happens quickly. If you have to ask everybody and get a, get a group think, it just doesn't. And we're, we're killing ourselves with this, dividing things up, and especially if we're going to rotate like, like a carousel for mayor. I think it's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Henley. Anybody else wish to speak? Kathy. Correction, Catherine.
That's okay. Doesn't matter. Uh, my name's Catherine Butler, and I live on Third Street. I've heard a lot of comments tonight, and I'm reflecting on them. I believe we need to separate the issue of what is being done from the way it is being done. This is a critical change in the way this city is being governed, and it is something that surfaced out of nowhere in July, and we are pretending to make a fair and reasoned decision for 10,000 voters by mid-November without any formal outreach to the population. How is this a realistic goal? The, this issue is a rush to judgment. It's a solution in search of a problem. Perhaps the people might like four or five districts, a rotating mayor or not. As a population, council, you really have no clue. What is the sense of urgency on such an important issue? Under what conditions, and this is an aside, under what conditions does a higher demographer make recommendations to a town about the number of council districts that they have? I'm sorry, I don't understand the role, but it just seems odd to me. Council, if you go forward in the face of these numbers of objections that you have heard tonight, it is a usurping of your power. As far as what is worthy of suit, the council is worthy of suit for this action. Council, if given the number of verbal objections you have heard and our own public record tonight, you pass this issue anyway. You are not listening to the will of the people, and you demonstrate that your position would not serve in the full light of day and the vote of the people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Catherine. Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? JR, do we have anyone else? Can't call them without a phone number. Nothing? We'll wait one minute. Want to make sure everybody has a voice.
Hi, I'm going to introduce you, and you'll be able to speak, okay? Mr. Mayor, Sue Geddes.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Make sure you turn off your device that you're watching the meeting on. Go ahead, Sue.
Can you hear me right now?
We can.
I would just like to reiterate what many have said before, that divisive mess is not unity. We see that on a global scale. It's prevalent, and it causes problems, dissent, one against another. I was preferring one mayor at large, one unified city of Laverne, which has worked beautifully for many years. I've, I've been a resident for many years. Um, if it went to district, it, five would be out of the question. It's just, it's not a balance. It is not a, um, showmanship of, um, representing all the people, which is, is what you do. So, that being said, I am not for five districts. I am not for divisive mess at all. Divisions don't work. Thanks for your time.
And then Abby Duncan is listening via livestream and would like us to call her. We just need you to email your phone number, please.
With no other, if anybody else is interested in coming up, enve up on the dais. Anybody else for a comment? Otherwise, we're going to, I see no others. We're going to close public comment and bring it back up to the dais. Council members? Comments? Councilmember Carter.
Let me turn this on. Okay, I've got so many notes here. I want to clarify some things and ask some questions. Um, there's so much misinformation out there, and listening to it, it's just that I want to clarify a few things, and I hope people listen out there, especially out there, because even though you've all spoken, it's still so many residents that aren't here that, um, also that we've all talked to that have given our, their opinions to us. So, I, I do take everybody's opinions into, uh, perspective. Um, the first, I'd like to start with a question to our demographer, if you'd come up to the podium. Thank you. There, with comments that we've heard tonight, does he need a, with comments that you heard tonight about us not getting the information out there and, which I do feel we have, but not getting the information out there, and then get how much mapping has come in? What have you found, um, what have you found is the average for cities that you've worked with of the numbers of mapping coming in with our population? Can you, can you answer that? I know that's a quick question for you.
Sure. We don't have a comprehensive survey or anything, but I've worked on a lot of these. And typically, a jurisdiction this size, we'd see maybe five, 10, 15 would be very successful, uh, getting participation, in part because this is an odd issue, and in part because there just aren't that many ways to draw up the city. Um, I mean, you see a lot of the maps are similar. So, the fact that you have over 30, I think, is, is among our higher jurisdictions of any size. Um, in Santa Barbara County, the whole county, we got 100 maps, which is a, a new record by like doubling our past record. Before that, we'd never had more than 50 in any jurisdiction, regardless of size. So, 30 is a lot, and I can say, having worked with the city extensively on outreach, given, within the incredibly short timeframe that the state imposes on this process, the city has, has done very extensive outreach.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we as a city voted to hire this company to do the research, and so the comments against the company, I find very offensive. I don't feel those are justified. We hired them to do a job. We might not like the answer that comes back, but that's what was presented to us, and we take that information, and we look at it, and we decide what we want to do. Um, the, let's start here, let's see. Please understand, I say it over and over again, we all live here in the city. I never wanted to do districting when it was first brought up by two residents, gosh, over a year ago, um, and they brought it up that we should go districting, and I thought, oh, don't put that out there, because I know this law firm, if someone's talking, do realize I'm speaking right now, um, that, that it was brought.
Robin, just a second. If we could please let, let her speak. We're on the dais now. We have their chance to speak, so let's give, um, time for our council, please.
Thank you, Tim. And so it was brought up to us to, um, that we should go districting, and I, I just knew that was opening up the, you know, doors. So, more and more cities got sued and, and, you know, they had to, you know, go into the districting, and you have a quicker timeframe. We have taken the time to do this correctly. When we realized how close it was getting to our city, all the cities that have been served, that it was time for us to take action so we could avoid the lawsuit. We always hear, we're not financially responsible, this and that. We were being responsible by not being sued. And so we move forward with this and trying to do everything the right way, listening to people, going out there, speaking with people. We, you, you don't realize how many hours we put into these, um, mapping. I, every email I get, I, I'm speaking for myself right now, but I, I have such respect for all my colleagues that I know they do the same thing. We spend the time figuring out what we're doing and what's happening. When, when we talk about, let's look at a rotating mayor. I didn't care for the one comment by a resident who said we could dumb it down by having five rotating mayors. You know, that is an insult to anybody, and, um, because. You know, that is an insult to anybody, and, because I feel everybody up here is very intelligent, and we could all take that role. If you follow, I follow Claremont, because I'm interested in what goes on in that college community. They have a rotating mayor. They have had that for many, many years. And at first, I thought that was strange, because we've always had a set mayor. I've lived here now 42 years, so I've gone through different mayors, watching what they've done. And their responsibility, you have to realize, it's not division amongst our city. It is going, you still all have the right to speak with every council member. We all will be voting on every issue with the city. But the wonderful part about having a rotating mayor is that it gives everybody the leadership that who were elected by the residents to share in the leadership of mayor. And truly, other than representation, as Kathy had said, we all have the same power. We're one vote each, that's why we have five. When it comes to the districting, people that have talked about that it's going to be division amongst the city, it is not. I find that it's, number one, Brittany Allison said it best, it actually could be unified, unifying the community, because you look at the area that you live in, wouldn't it be nice to have one representative you know, knows your area, what your needs are, talks to you? When it comes to elections, they would, you'd have one person instead of the whole city just going for that vote, you'd have one person talking to you more, saying, "I'd like to represent you for this reason." It'd be more of a close-knit group, and that person would be the one to represent you as far as speaking, but it's not the only person that you can go to, you know, and so, Pomona has the different, you know, districts they have for many years. And I have a few friends that are on the council, and I always, you know, I've been talking to them, and it's working well. I know their city's quite big. But let me hit a couple of these other points, but I wanted to clarify that. Still, realize, everything we do, please, that we live here, we will be having the districting. And by me saying that, I think I made it clear that I believe in the five districts, because I believe we should have a rotating mayor, and that I just feel that, you know, it's the best thing for our city, so that we can have the representation for the Hispanic vote. It's been recommended that five districts is the best way for the Hispanics to get the equal, representation that they deserve. And, let's see, that one's done here. The three points that I wanted to clarify is that it gives equal representation, and also then, the five districts, we would, oh, if we went four districts, as I said last time, that would give two representatives in one district, no matter where it is, even in years to come, let's say South Laverne, somebody decides to run for mayor, and they would have two representatives. That doesn't sound bad, but if it, let's say that they wanted to build a, you know, new Kmart down the street, right in their area, they already have two votes. They only need one more to make that happen. I don't feel that's equal representation for the whole community. I think we need one representative for every district, and we can work with that. Let's see here. Okay, so I finished that one, and that one there. Oh, and as far as thinking that the mayor is the one that represents us for county-state issues, we all now, and will continue to sit on every committee that we do already. And so, such as I'm on the gold line, that's for our whole community. I represent all the cities from Union Station all the way out to Montclair right now, and I will continue that, and same as everybody else here, we will still work as a council, but just representing a district. So, I hope that helped clarify some things. I appreciate everybody's comments, and everybody has the right to say what they want. We might not agree, but we can't insult one another for their opinion. I don't insult anyone here that thinks differently than me, because we all have that right to think what we, you know, believe, but let's communicate, let's work as a community and, you know, make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Who would like to be next? Mr. Crosby?
I believe that it was in the 1970s when we, the city of Laverne, voted to have a mayor race. And it's difficult for change. I hear it's very difficult with everybody about districting. And I understand that having five districts would make a larger population of voters, but that's, per the demographer today, it's 42 to 38 percent. It's a 4 percent growth from five to four districts. But I also believe that we need to carry on what's been told of us as well. I am for four districts because of that, and I know there's inherent issues with that. I also believe that everybody that runs, I know I live right in the middle of Laverne, and I don't represent just the middle of Laverne. I live just one house away from the freeway. I don't represent just that. I believe we go for districts, and I get voted in by my district. I know I will think of all of Laverne as everyone here will, and as everyone has. And that is why, even if we do go to districts, it's not only going to be about that person's district, because I think that we all represent everybody, and we listen to all the same things, and we read everything, and we move forward with that. But there was a reason why it went to a vote in the 70s, and that it's kept that way, and even though it brings some divisiveness. I have heard, and I respect our mayor and his votes, and how many voted, how many people voted for him? He ran against two people. I ran against eight. That's why there's less votes for me. But, but I still believe that we, I still believe we have a mayor race, and it runs every two years. That's the greatest thing about our country. We can uproot anyone that we don't like in four years for our president, in two years in Laverne. So, if we don't like Mr. The Mayor over here, let, vote him out in two years. If you don't like me, vote me out as well, please. Some days, it might be better. But, but we, but we have this in our country, that's why we vote. And if we don't like it, then we can vote that person out. But I believe that when we do make changes, we still need to look at traditions, and our tradition in Laverne has been voting for a mayor. I asked the demographer last time, how many in his cities have a rotating mayor, and how many cities have a mayor? And it was about 40, 60, I don't know which percentage is which way or not, but it's about, it's close to half that they have them both. It works either way. I see the arguments for a rotating mayor, and I have that where I work and deal with the people, it works either way, but our city has shown that it wanted a mayor, and that is why I'll go for four districts.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Councilmember Lau.
So, my comments reflect what the power of the people is, in terms of, you have the power to vote whoever you want into office at any time. And at the end of the day, districting is what we're being directed to do. I think there are going to be hurdles and challenges, just like there are hurdles and challenges with whatever process or system is currently in place. I think that is, that is life. But I think to some of the points that have been made, it's what do we do with what we have been given, and how do we make sure that we make the best out of that situation? I do think there is an opportunity to say, whatever candidates are running for office, our expectation as the people of this city is that you will work with each other to make it work. If we were, had the capacity to stay at large, which is not the way the wind is blowing, but if we had the capacity to stay at large, I think your expectation is that we try to work together as much as possible to reach a consensus, and to shed light on different perspectives to each other and with the community, so that we can come to the best resolution for the residents, which includes all of us who sit up here on the dais. So, you know, my hope is that whether it's a four district, a five district, that whoever it is that is being elected, that the people are looking at, who are we putting up for office in these positions? And are they going to not only be the representative voice for that particular community of interest, but how are they going to work cohesively with the other folks that are going to be serving on council in order to effectuate the greater good for the city as a whole? Because I don't think it does any good for any of us, again, whether it's an at-large city or a districted city, for us to be at odds. And so, my hope and my expectation is that whoever runs for these seats in the future, and whoever sits in these seats now, has that in mind. And I think, and I've said this before, I think our council, and granted, this is the only experience I've had being on a council, so I've not had any other members to have worked with, but I do believe that this iteration of this council has worked really hard to build bridges with each other, and to find, why do we have different perspectives? And we may not always agree on where we come from, but at least we have the discussions. And that's what I would hope for any candidate that runs for a seat for a city council. So, that's one. You know, like Councilwoman Carter indicated, you know, there are a lot of people that do talk to us. So, we appreciate the ones of you that come out here, because it is, you know, a Monday night, you sit out here in the chairs that aren't always the most comfortable, or you call in on Zoom, or you do whatever, and you're actively participating, but that doesn't denote the only level of participation, because there are people that call us, that email us, there are friends that I have in this city that I've known for many, many years that contact me, and they're not within a certain confine of a neighborhood. So, we do talk to a lot of people and take in, you know, those responses. We look at the number of maps that have come in, and what those maps are saying to us in terms of what the will of the people is. So, I don't want you to think that we don't care, or that we're not looking at these things. We are looking at all of these things. And then, other than that, I, you know, my other point that I would make is, you know, I've mentioned this before, a friend of mine ran for city council for the city of Claremont when they recently went to districting, and he shared a lot of the same concerns that many of you have brought up, or that many people have brought up, in terms of, is this going to be divisive? How is this going to work? You know, how are we going to work together? And, you know, he says that one of the most rewarding things that he's found since being on council in a districted community is that his community is one that normally did not feel like they had a pathway to a council person, did not feel like they had someone they could talk to, but now they feel represented. Doesn't mean that he always does what they want him to do, but he at least can convey that perspective and that viewpoint to the rest of the council, and that is the intent of districting, ideally, right? And again, I think it behooves the people who sit in these seats to further that aim, the good intention of it, rather than look at ways to say, "How can we make it divisive?" Because that's not fruitful for any of us. And again, we live here. I'm not interested in living in a divided community. So, again, whether it's four districts, five districts, whatever, my aim, and my intent, and my goal, as I believe is the intent and aim and goal of every council person on here, is to make sure that we work together, however that looks like, to make sure that we are making good decisions for all of the community. So, I just want you to keep that in mind. And then I just have one question for the demographer, in terms of a question that was raised by one of the residents on Zoom regarding communities of interest. If there was any significant input or feedback from the resident saying, "Oh, this community has to stay together because it's, you know, this HOA and this park is there," or, you know, "You can't separate that word," are there any other than balancing the population, ensuring that the Latino vote was not diluted, those things? Were there any other issues brought up by residents with respect to communities of interest?
No, there weren't. The four versus five debate kind of swamped all the other smaller issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Mayor Protam Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we've heard many people saying, "Don't do anything." And if we did nothing, we would be subject to somebody filing a demand letter like San Dimas, like Claremont, I mean, I'm sorry, Covina and San Dimas, and be forced into moving into districts with significant influence by that person or that firm that issued a demand letter. So, we would lose some of our voice in creating the districts that we're working on right now. If we attempted to put this on as a ballot measure, as was the measure in the early 70s to make the mayor being a separate position, we would be subject to the same demand letter, and have to essentially pay the demand cost, and then move at the swift process that is required. One of our neighboring cities is actually trying to shoehorn their process of districting in before June of this year, even though they started much later than us, in order to make sure that they don't have a June election that's subsequently invalidated, enforcing them to do a special election to satisfy the demand letter. If that were the case for us, it could cost us not just $30,000 for the demand letter, but several hundred thousands of dollars to satisfy both the demand and create the special election for this process. We don't need any additional disruptions in our community, our city. Our city isn't necessarily fine from everybody I talk to. Several people say it's fine, everything's going well. Several people I talk to say that they're hurting, that our community is hurting. We need to continue to move forward in a way that helps our community return to what I like to think of are the days that I had as a child. The California Voting Rights Act has been on the books for many years, and now we're taking this action to comply. It was a little over a year ago that Mr. Bowen let us know that we were in violation of the California Voting Rights Act, and a month later, Zach Gibson also let us know that we should be considering districting. If those two gentlemen want to come and chat with me about it, I'm happy to. The last time I said this, and then later, Mr. Bowen showed up and called me a chicken for not talking to him, but I'm always available. I'm sorry, I didn't want to digress, but I'm really moved by what's going on, and this is very deeply important to me. There is no, there is no nobility, or there isn't nobility in taking this step by us. But when I learned of the precarious position that our city was in because our at-large voting formation was at opposition to the California law, it made sense to move our community to a more secure place, a more secure governing formation. In the early 70s, the council thought they would take a proactive and a progressive measure moving forward, and convert the ceremonial mayor as being rotating among council to the city, so that the city could choose who would be the ceremonial mayor. Over the last five decades, it appears as though our community has lost focus on the fact that the mayor is a ceremonial position by usurping, or by imposing into that mayor position, more power, more authority, more identity for our Laverne. We, the entire council, represent the city of Laverne. We, the entire council, speak for the city of Laverne. This is our community, together, juntos, together. We are together as a council, and the council formation is the formation of our local governing. This path is the best path forward, moving towards districts. It is not a perfect path, but we are not a perfect body. We are not a perfect city. Our city, our community, is hurting, and we need to move forward together to help our community heal. This is the path, this path is least cost. We don't have to pay any demand letter costs. We don't need to suffer from accusation or aggression on the formation of our council. We have made positive progress in other areas of governing our city. We have restructured finances for the sustainability of our future. We have formed the Committee for Cultural Awareness and Social Inclusion, CASI, to provide residents a forum, helping our community to become more compassionate. We have passed Measure LV to support our local public safety services. We have hired a fire chief and supported his plan to regain a strong footing for the vitality of the fire department. A five district council makeup is more closely aligned to the spirit of our local makeup. Laverne has a ceremonial mayor. We do not have a strong mayor-council structure. Our ceremonial mayor presides over the meetings, signs documents, and speaks publicly. A ceremonial mayor formation does not necessitate an at-large vote. I believe that having an at-large vote distorts the construct of our local government. I also believe that five equal council members will serve our community better by encouraging them to work together, juntos, together. will serve our community better by encouraging them to work together, juntos, together. I believe that having an at-large mayor, even a ceremonial mayor, will misinform the community and mislead the council by the simple appearance of imputing more equity, more authority because of a vote tally and title. It is clear to me that our community, our needs somewhat, needs some tender loving care. While they may have been disparaged by one or some, I know that Assemblymember Chris Holden and his office, my church, the Church of the, Laverne Church of the Brethren, and CASI, our Committee for Cultural Awareness and Social Inclusion, are all ready and available to support, listen, to lift up our residents, our community, and our city in helping the healing process. The main points I want to make are, there is no defense for at-large voting. That ship has sailed in the CVRA. Forming five districts reflect our ceremonial mayor-council formation, five equal council members working together. This satisfies the most, the map that we will choose, I believe, will satisfy the most demographic elements and keep all council members seated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Davis. Everybody spoke tonight, they have their ideas and their reasons. I just want to make it very clear that originally, when the district voting was brought up, it was by Mr. Bowen, and I did bring it to the agenda. And it was just for discussion, to find out what exactly is district voting? Not to go to district voting, but to discuss district voting. As that transitioned, we decided not to at that time. And then, Councilmember Carter and Councilmember Davis did make the motion to go to district voting to a five district. I made it very clear at that time that I was in support and would hold up in a court of law a four district voting with an elected mayor. I personally believe that an elected mayor is very important. You have four other strong council members with a voice. That voice is for your state and federal elected officials. The power of the four with the one, when there's an issue, it speaks loudly to our community, and it does. I've done, I do it all the time, whether it be Catherine Barger, whether it be Grace Napolitano, whether it be Assemblymember Holden. You have a direct line to that elected official, and it makes a big difference. When we discuss this with our city management and with the council, you have a voice, and it's a very strong voice. You have 32,000-plus people, that's your voice, and they're electeds also. So, the fact that our community has been served very well by an at-large mayor, and Mr. Davis, you were some of the reason for that at-large mayor with support from Mr. Kendrick, and that was part of you being elected. And yes, I was elected as mayor overwhelmingly. First time was lost by seven votes, the second time, yes, I did. And that's not even the issue. The issue is, we're at district voting right now. But I want to make it very clear that the mayor, elected mayor, is not a ceremonial position. I personally work extremely hard to do this. I work hard with our local electeds, with our state electeds. And we have conversations all the time on issues that affect this city. And when it affects our city and our community, we must get that information to them, whether it's a dissatisfaction or an approval. And it does carry a big hammer. I know it does. So, I think it's very important, as Mr. Crosby had stated, that we've been doing this for some time, an elected mayor. Although, I'm not, I'm not happy about the district voting situation. Our demographers did a good job. Unfortunately, the information that they were given was askew. Our system didn't function properly. I did not like the idea that it was more favored to a five district than a four district. I just think, point blank, I thought that was askew. Understanding why you're doing it, but we do have four districts in here that do show that they're united, they do work. They work as far as our socioeconomic makeup, but also our ethnic makeup. So, I am in 100% support of a four district with an elected mayor. I think it serves the purpose for our community. I think we'll be properly represented. And I appreciate everybody's input, whether for or against. This is a very odd situation. We are in the supervisory districts right now with our supervisors. It's in the same situation, no extension. Once you start the process, you have a certain timeframe. On December 16th, we have to, or 15th, we have to have a decision. Same as the supervisory districts. And they are having a heck of a time, just like we are. San Dimas is on the edge of it right now because of the fact, they have to. They were, they were, they were, you know, served, so. Being that said, I am in favor of a four district with an elected mayor. So, where do we move from here, Mr. Russi? We want to read the two different titles, is that correct?
Well, no.
Or we want to first figure out what we're?
I think we need to figure out what direction we are going with. And so, I would advise, I mean, I think we've taken the first hurdle, which is to say that moving in districting is necessary. It's just a question now, as I said at the beginning, of what is the appetite of the council? Is it four or five districts? So, I think we need to decide that, and then we can, from there, narrow down to the specific map that we want to select.
Okay. So, are we going to vote, or we're just going to say our, we already said, basically? We need to vote?
I think we need to make a, I would suggest a motion on four or five districts.
Yeah, I think a preliminary motion.
Well, the first vote is, I'm sorry, the first vote is district or not district?
Well, I think, I don't think we need to vote on that. I think we've got, that's kind of where everybody is at. It's not necessarily a formal action.
Well, if somebody, if they want to, if the residents want to hear us take the action of saying, do we form districts or not, we can make that vote. I move that we form districts for voting.
Second on that?
I'll second it.
Vote. Now, we move to the next item, which would be a four district or a five district. So, we would vote the same way, but we have to make a motion for the four district.
I'll make a motion to go, to hold a five district voting.
We have a second?
I will second that.
Vote, please. Well, it's not going to make any difference to do a four district.
The vote was three to two in favor of five districts. Okay, so now we need to select the map.
That would be?
Please, everybody? Please, we've already had our time to speak, please.
So, now, if it would be maybe a suggestion, if you want the demographer to give some input based on that now narrowing down, you can, or if council has a desire, just trying to help you sift through some of what's in front of you, whatever council's preference is.
Well, the, the map, the five district map that I'm in favor of is, is the, the five district map that kept everybody in their seat, that had the best score in most of the demographics, especially the Hispanic. It was map 103 modified though by the, by NDC to make sure that both council, or Mayor Hepburn and Councilmember Carter had their seats. So, there wasn't any crossover. I, it's not in here, it's?
It would be, because the report from before is at the back.
Who is it?
So, it is, if you go to the back of that?
I didn't see NDC, I only saw the public, okay, my bad.
Is that correct? Yes, so if you go to the very back, and then you'll find public 103?
Right.
I think that reflects that, is that correct?
No, that's not, that's not NDC. It'd be NDC 103, so I think it's in the PowerPoint, but I didn't see it in our?
Oh, if it, if it got left out, my apologies, it's been on the website.
No, I get it, the whole process is, is moving quickly, and it's imperfect, so.
The map is on the PowerPoint, yes, and the statistics are on the website.
Yeah, share your screen and go to NDC 103. Yeah, the one on the right?
Yes, it'd be the one on the right-hand side.
So, that scored very well in all the demographics, and it also provides a home for every sitting council member. Does, does anybody have a proposal for a different map, or is?
We, we have to stop the chatter on the audience, please. We're already at the dais making the decision. We have gone to a five district, now we're selecting what map we're going to be able to use. So, if we could please keep, keep everyone civil as we move through this, thank you.
I think it moved.
He moved.
That's, that's not, that's not 103. There's 103. So, I'll make a motion that we approve map NDC 103 as our district.
I'll second that motion.
No, no, Mr. Crosby? Then we need to vote.
I vote? Okay, map NDC 103, four to one.
Could I, could I ask a question of the demographer?
Yes, please, go ahead.
At this stage, because you're next going to go to the ordinances, and I have blanks in there for which of the districts will be going to election in '22. Can you help me?
Yeah, we'll put the map back up there.
Yes, so that, that would be driven by the election year of the council member that's in each district?
Right.
So, believe, if we can, believe the PDF, if you can go to the, the districting website? Oh, here we go, I've got it here on the website.
Looks like there's?
So, it's one, one, three, and four.
Yes, yeah, one, three, and four.
Would be up in 2022, and then two and five would be up in 2024. And just so people know where I'm pulling this from, on the city's website is all the draft maps, including a PDF that has this map and the statistics, full statistics for it.
Mr. Turney, our next up? You already made the map?
I, I have prepared in your packet two sets of two ordinances, one for the four district scenario and one for the five. You're now going to be voting on the five district ordinances. There are two ordinances, they're virtually identical, except for the effective date. Ordinances that affect elections are immediately effective. However, just in case anyone wants to challenge that, I'm suggesting that you also regularly introduce, and have come back for a secondary, the same ordinance with a different number. So, I'm sorry if that's long-winded and hard to understand, but it's just trying to have something in front of you for all scenarios that's, that's protected. So, the first action, based upon your preliminary actions up to this point, would be to waive reading in full and adopt ordinance 1106.
Counsel? It would be a motion, then?
Yeah, so I will, I will move that we waive reading in its entirety, but adopt ordinance number 1106 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laverne, County of Los Angeles, State of California, establish, establishing of five city council districts for a bi-district electoral system and certain related matters.
That suffice? We need a second on that?
I will second that motion.
Vote.
All right, the final action, and, and I guess?
The results of that were four, one, in favor of 1106.
And the, there are some blanks as I was inquiring of the demographer as to which districts would be up in 2022 and which in 2024. Those blanks will be filled in with those districts as per our discussion.
They'll be in the body of that? Okay, of the resolution?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
So, now we need to introduce or move to pass ordinance 1107? Are we ready for that?
1107, the motion on that one would be to waiving in full and introduce.
Okay, thank you.
Motion, please.
I move that we waive reading in full and introduce ordinance number 1107 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laverne, County of Los Angeles, State of California, establishing five city council districts for a bi-district electoral system and certain related matters.
Second.
I'll make that motion, or second on that motion.
Vote, please. Thank you.
So, that motion also passed, or that ordinance passed?
Four to one. That's, wait, Mr. Turney, Mr. Crass, anything else?
Just because there were some comments kind of raised in the audience about notification, and yes, we will prepare to do a press release as well as get information out over the next several months, well and ahead of the election, letting people know what districts and what would be up for 2022 and which particular seats.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Russi. We will move to public comments and communications. Anybody in from the audience? Mr. Gabbaldon?
I think you have my card, right? So, tonight, we've heard a lot of reasoning why we should do it. And I feel that Councilmember Davis and Carter, your, your reasoning was disingenuous. I feel that you were not being totally honest to everybody tonight. And as longstanding members of the community, I think you failed us tonight. Because it's not just you, it's who, who comes behind you? That you've opened the door to the city now and given them the keys. Who's going to outspend you? Who's going to out-motivate whatever it is, bad actors in this community? You've done that by doing what you just did. Councilmember Lau, not even two years on the clock, and you might have made the most consequential decision of this city's entire history. Crosby and Hepburn, thank you for your votes. Mr. Mayor, I didn't vote for you. But I voted on principle for what I thought was right at the time. I feel that coming out of this, you've represented us well. Think you've been honest about some of the things that have been going on in the city for many years. And I think that the transparency that you've tried to bring has been outvoted four to one in many cases. And I think that this city council really needs to think about what you did tonight, and where you're taking us, and who you speak to. Who didn't show up in this room tonight? Who didn't show up on video? Who waited to the last minute to chime in and give their, their opinions? How about you tell us who it is that convinced you that this is right for the city? Because we all showed up, and we probably have 50 people behind us that we could have brought in if we really felt like it, but we didn't do that. But you're talking about ghosts, about people that you meet on the street. Who are these people? And those, those maps that you've agreed to tonight, they conveniently allow each of you to sit in a district unchallenged. If that were the case, no, that's true. Go look at it, because you did not say the truth about two districts, two votes in one district. If that's were the case. No, that's true. Go look at it. Because you did not say the truth about two district, two votes in one district. That was misinformation. That map up there allows everybody on this council to sit uncontested in the next election, the one that you voted on for night. That is a fact. So whoever sits in council number three, I'm letting you right now. I'll see you in 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbaldon. Any others wish to speak for public comment? Danita.
I'd like to go on public record saying that when we have these meetings in the Zoom, these meetings are then posted to the website for all the residents to view on YouTube channel. But it seems like there's many minutes that have been missing out of the meetings. The names of these people are not fully shown. It says 21 attendees, 18 of them, but you can only see 12 of their names. You know, there's a lot of things that people don't pay attention to and it's always in the details that gets you. And so going forward, I would like to have one of the council members put this as an agenda item that all information presented on Zoom, phone calls, like Councilmember Carter said, she didn't, couldn't read what their names were. They weren't announcing their names. Usually JR or Eric, when he was doing it, would announce them or tell the person to announce them so that we know who it is that is speaking, you know? But it, we collectively need to be like together in understanding all of this information. And the fact that a private email was sent to a resident in my neighborhood inviting them to a Q and A about this districting tells me that the city isn't really being forthcoming. Like, why wasn't it put on the city website for other people to be able to attend that meeting and ask questions? A private email tells me that there's some kind of backdoor deals going on and I, I don't know what it is. I mean, I would love to know what the bonus is that these guys are gonna get because you voted in favor with them. You know, $40,000 is supposed to be a non-biased, you know, neutral third party. And I mean, if you look at his history and his resume, he's tied to the DNC like every which way to Sunday. I don't understand how this is a fair process. So I just need that to be on record.
Thanks, Danita. Anyone else wish to speak? Hannah.
Anne Anderson, Sloan Drive. Uh, I asked last meeting if the attorney or Mr. Russi could answer my question and I never got my questions answered. Uh, since you now voted to go five districts, we're not happy. And first of all, I'd like to point out why I'm not happy about it is because it has nothing to do with if it's a ceremonial mayor or not. It's, the fact is, is that we've lost our voting rights in the city to vote who we want to, on our council. We want to, the people who want a mayor, wants to vote for a mayor altogether as a city. So we, at least we have a few people we can pick from and have some voting rights still, representing us, a mayor. That's all it was. I mean, right now, if you just, if it was just like how it is right now and you wanted to rotate a ma- mayor, that wouldn't be so bad because we still elected all of you. So if you wanted to rotate a mayor now as it is, that would have been okay. But since you took our voting rights away where we can't vote for our city council members anymore, we'd like to vote for one person to represent us. So I'm gonna ask again. There's about 21,000 people in the city who vote, voters. We have to have 15% of the voters to get an initiative on the ballot. I wanna know if that's true. I also wanna know how long before, I'm not asking for a special election because I know it's a lot of money. So if you wanna put it on the one in Ju- July of next year, that's fine. So if we get the 15, if we get the 33,000 something signatures, how long do we have to get this init- before the election, do we have to get this initiative on the ballot? Cause I think we have, we have to have a say. And I also wanna know, if we do get it on the ballot, does that hold up any law, hold up any, this whole thing until we, the people can vote on it? So like I said before, I'm not interested in getting sued. If we can hold this up until the next election, that's fine with me. Because this is something that's gonna go on for years. People should have the right to vote for one person in this city altogether. And it, it doesn't matter, you have to pick the right person to be the mayor. If he's in the same district as somebody else, who cares? We're voting for him to represent, for all of us who voted for him. Now that you're taking away that I can't vote for, I can't vote for you anymore because you're not in my district anymore if I wanted to vote for you. So you took my vote away. So there's a lot of people who aren't gonna go for this. So I'm looking for an initiative to put on the ballot and I wanna know how it has to be done. And if, if the council could please direct the city man, the city attorney to answer us, I sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Russi. Can you answer that?
I think the best thing to do would be to schedule sometime tomorrow. We can certainly outline the process that that involves. Um, we can sit you down with the city clerk. It'll also involve the county. I do not know what the deadlines are offhand unless the city attorney does.
Yeah, I, I honestly don't know whether it's 10 or 15% or, I, I can't give you an honest answer tonight. It would be very difficult to get the, that amount of signatures and qualify for the June ballot because you're, you're always moving backwards and, uh, we have to, or the, the county who runs our election for us, they have to know what offices and now districts are up for election in June. And it used to be, um, when the election was in March, um, the, the deadline came back to December. So I, I think it would be next to impossible to get it on this election and we would already be implementing on that same ballot, the districts.
Well, that's okay for just, we're just looking for a mayor. I don't care if five, six or four.
So the best thing to do would be, cause we, there are a lot of unknowns. We can at least, if you'd like to come in either tomorrow or Wednesday and Loopy can get you the information, at least guide you to where you can get the actual dates. We can go from there and the signa- number signatures needed.
Okay, so you could just email. You don't need a number, right?
Uh, I might, but it might be, she would send you a link and you're probably gonna have questions. That's why I would suggest maybe coming in.
Well, I mean, once you have the information, you have to let me know. So if you could call me or email me and let me know what day.
My only comment was just, let's just make sure that information gets passed on. I don't wanna conjecture about how difficult or not difficult the process is. Just at least provide her with the information that she's asking for.
Thank you. Lily.
Lily Brenner, thank you. I still have a chance to comment a little bit about communication. I think I get lost about what I belong, some spot, okay? I know a lot of neighbors, they will probably figure it out next year when they see the bottom. Oh, what happened? What happened? So definitely very clear our voting right or attack, okay? So I'm not really happy for that. Actually, I'm kinda frustrated. So compared to the communication, I don't want, my English is not perfect enough to deliver the right information. I don't wanna get twisted. So I apologize to Rich Bowen, okay? He's not, I hope he was still online because I think he's so unlucky, get twisted twice. First, he came to ask about just voting. It's about, what is it? What happened? I asked him too, what's happening? We, we asked, it's not because he wanted, he's wanting to figure out what's happening. So he got twisted first time. Second time about Ross, Rossi, manager, okay? So you are pretty much a deep stay here because you will stay here forever and then about other people, two years, rotate. So you are the solid people here. So I said, I said, our city doing good job last years. I lived here 15 years. My husband, 20 years. He love here, I love here, my kids born here, we all love Laverne. I like Laverne, Christmas, whatever, 1st of July, a lot of tradition. I love it, right? I respect all your guys, but I don't happy, I'm not happy my words get twisted. Even though my English is not perfect, but I think I delivered the very clear information to support Bowen, Bowen, right, Richard. So I feel like I get twisted. And then, just like Lily said, I was busy with my kids and I wanna listen to the video. What? Just like Lily said, we did good job. So we keep same thing, change the, change the rule, everything say the same. I just kinda met about that. I haven't apologized. So I officially apologize to you. Thank you. So we have problem. So please. I was still here. I'm social media person. I get some message just now and then my phone die. I don't know why only one phone call. People ask how to call. What, 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 what happened? How could I call? But only one people call in. Where's the other people? I don't know. Maybe they too rushed to write email or anything. But we have a very big problem about communication. If you guys really, really love Laverne, think, really think about rotate mayor and the five district is good for us, good for our future. But at least listen to why so many people come to support four, four district, one mayor? Only four voice, one, two, two online, four people support. So it's very clear how many percentage. So I don't wanna get twisted anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak from the audience? We'll move to phone calls. Or Zoom, actually.
Please say who it is.
Okay. Couple questions, representation and so on. We had to vote for only one council member in our district now. But there's gonna be five or four on the Zoom, the mayor pro tem. How do we have to say so in, in that end? And the other thing, does this now mean that we're gonna have five rotating mayor pro tems or is that position gonna be deleted? Could I get an answer on that?
Pardon? Yeah. If he's finished, we'll answer afterwards. Thank you, guys. People in the audience, if we could please keep it down. We have our Zoom on, please.
Anyone else via Zoom that would like to speak, please raise your hand. Nobbs family?
Hello, can you hear me?
You can.
Hello, this is Mrs. Nobbs calling. I just wanna say that, um, I have emailed our council people and I am really disillusioned with not getting any response from any of them. And, um, I'm really saddened by the vote tonight. Again, it's you guys against him. And I think I totally support all of the people that have spoken tonight about, um, standing up for our rights as residents and that our vote has been taken away from us. And I'm very saddened about what has happened to our community tonight. And the fact that none of my council people reached out to us tonight is, other than Tim, is very disturbing. And that's all I have to say.
Anybody else here? Oh my God, I don't like that.
If there's anyone else out there, please raise your hand. Nobody else, sir?
If there's no other people, we're gonna. Yes, we'll do that right now. Thank you. If there's no one else, we're gonna close public comment and bring it up to the dais. Mr. Russ, you had a couple?
Yeah, I think the question that was asked was regarding how the representation would work and mayor and mayor pro tem, they would both be kinda similar to the cycle that you have right now with mayor pro tem. You would still have a mayor pro tem and you would have a mayor that would be voted on, on an annual basis, right after the election. So depending on, and when I say right after the election, you know, you have, there's a June election in, uh, one, two-year period and then there'd be a March election and the presidential because of the way the primary will fall in the state of California. So that'll fluctuate back and forth.
And if I could just add, um, the mayor and mayor pro tem, um, could rotate, but not necessarily. The council will convene at the meeting after the election results are declared and they will pick one of the five to be mayor and one to be mayor pro tem. A year from there, then, uh, they will go through the same process. And, uh, I've seen it in my career where everybody's kinda happy with the guy who's sitting in the middle chair, how he's doing. Hey, he can have another year. You know, it does happen. And, and not necessarily everyone on the council, uh, wants the middle chair. It, it, but that's the process. So, uh, after the election and then one year after, uh, that time, those will be the decisions, uh, made by a majority of the council.
There were a couple of questions that Kathy had had regarding the, uh, the two.
Nobody gets two votes.
No, it's only one vote. That was a, I think we clarified that. You probably didn't hear, but it was one vote, one council member, no matter, on the five. It's always one, always one vote.
Caution you to, just give me what the questions are.
You go ahead. And the other one was the, is the term of the four months and it's a, the term.
Yeah, it's not four months. It'll be on an annualized basis. So every year is gonna rotate. It won't be within that four or five, whatever cycle. It'll be a full.
Two-year mayor?
No, it'll be every year they, the mayor will be voted on.
You just said that it could be the same person.
Okay. I think that was it. Council comments? Councilmember Carter.
Okay. First, I do want to clarify, map 103, Tim and I are in the same district.
No, you're not, NDC, no.
No, you're not.
Oh, okay. No, the map I was looking at here for 103. Okay, please.
Please let the council member speak. We've all had time tonight. Please let's show some respect. Thank you.
It is different, oh, okay. My 103 showed it that way, it's all...
Our 103 shows it different than NDC.
Okay, anyhow. Okay, so Veterans Day, we all attended Veterans Day. It was a wonderful event down at our memorial. And I do want to announce that two of our Eagle Scouts that we recognized at last meeting, two of them, it's Dallas Lopez and Michael Perez, both have been picked to be in the Rose Parade. So they're representing Laverne. They'll be, you know how they carry the signs saying what the award is for the float coming through? So both those boys will be representing Laverne. That's troop 411, out of the Methodist Church. And then today I stopped by Bonita High School. I was invited to the job fair they had, and it was really nice to see all the kids coming up at lunchtime to fill out applications, seeing what the job would entail. So we all know every restaurant business is hurting for employees. So I thought that was very smart of some of the restaurants to come in and try to find employees. And the other thing I want to say is just I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving. Enjoy your families and be kind to one another.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Crosby.
Sounds like a storm outside. Again, Veterans Day, the VFW, the Band of Brothers, the Boy Scouts, Dan Harden for doing all he does for that event. Yvonne and the Parks and Rec doing so much work for that as well. It was a great, great celebration. I was happy to have my own father-in-law veteran sit right next to me and appreciate all that, all the veterans have done. We have our tree lighting coming up as well. I just want to make sure everyone knows. And then I just want to highlight tonight, JR, you do a fabulous job. That is the most, that is a difficult job, trying to navigate people and helping them to come through the internet for us, and I appreciate it. I know trying to do all that when the pressure's on you, and I really appreciate you doing that. So I just want to make sure publicly.
He will be on Saturday Night Live this weekend, just so you know. Councilmember Lau.
Just a minor correction. I unfortunately was not able to make it to the Veterans Day event as my work does not have that day off, so I was not able to go. But did want to thank the staff. I know how much work they put into making sure everything goes off without a hitch, all the folks in the community that participate, many of my friends who have family that serve or have served. And so it was a nice event, and I know that those folks were very grateful to be able to have that happen within our city. So thank you for all that participated and helped out with that event. Thank you to the veterans. And then just, you know, Thanksgiving is next week. I feel like this year has, much like 2020, has gone by in a flash. So, and it's been a difficult time through the pandemic. So just ask that, you know, everybody say your blessing, you know, count your blessings and say your thank yous and be kind to one another as we round out the end of this year.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
I concur with much of what's already been said, so I won't add much other than to, again, thank our city staff for the fabulous work they did in helping to set up the Veterans Day celebration. That was quite a memorial, it always is. We had a Pomona Valley Transportation Authority meeting. Everything's moving forward, looking for more riders. So if you need a ride, think about the Get About and look up Pomona Valley Transportation Authority. Good deals are waiting for you. I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thanksgivings can be challenging times. I know in my family, we're going to be missing somebody. But, you know, hug your loved ones and share times with them, because they are precious. And look forward to seeing everybody at the tree lighting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Again, kudos to the staff. The veterans' celebration was probably one of the better ones we've been to. Even with after COVID, it was well represented, and the Band of Brothers, and Dan Harden did a fantastic job, the Boy Scouts through 411, and just all the staff that did a fantastic job. I can't, it was nice to be there. I'm sorry that you missed it, Wendy. I know that some people didn't have it off. It's just like, it looks crazy, anyway. Also, next Saturday, on the 20th, we have our, is it the, we have the Cool Cruise, is that correct?
The, it's not Cool Cruise, Cruise in Laverne, yes, thank you.
Anyway, that's the car show, it's going to be big. And it's also a toy drive, so bring a toy with you if you can. And then also, we have the Historical Society Walk at the University of Laverne at 12 noon. Yeah, it's 12 noon. And I can't, yeah, you do have to make reservation, but there's still reservations. You can make them online, so check the city website, the Historical Society, and you can do that. And I do want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy your family. I know that COVID is relaxing itself somewhat, but still stay safe out there. And those who choose to vaccinate, please vaccinate. Get that third shot, that booster if you're that age, and kids also. So we need to be very careful, it's still out there, and it's still, it still is causing lives to be lost. So before we close, I've got some pretty sad news. It's Delia Heredia, who always knows them as the owner of Delia's Barber and Beauty for more than 20 years, passed away yesterday from battle with cancer. So while we will be scheduling a more formal adjournment in the coming month, just condolences to the family, on behalf of the council, the city staff. We'll get more when we do her closing for the, closing the meeting. But she was definitely an icon with the downtown business district. Kids went to school together, grandkids, and so we're going to miss her dearly. So keep the family and all the close loved ones in your prayers. Our next scheduled meeting will be our tree lighting at 6:30 PM on December 6th. Oh, wait a minute, we have a study session. Boy, you know what? You need to make these bigger writing. We will adjourn to Monday, December 6th, 2021, at 5 o'clock PM for a council study session on the 2021 American Rescue Plan. And we will have our tree lighting ceremony at our actual city council meeting at 6:30 PM on the same night. Thank you, everybody, for your participation. Good night. At 10, at 9:40, 50, whatever, 54 PM. There we go.